To order. And all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. For what you say is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you very much. Now may we have roll call, please.
Mr. Buehne Ventura.
President.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalum.
Present. Thank you very much. Now moving on to our presentations this evening to our guests presenting, welcome. Thank you very much. We have for our presentations, the North County Business Resource Center, who will be doing the overview of services, Amanda Anthony, who is the center manager. Welcome very, welcome to our meeting this evening.
Thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully I can figure out how to make this chair. It's been a long time since I did a slideshow. So I am Amanda Anthony. It's nice to meet you all. I'm the Business Resource Center Manager. The North County Business Resource Center was a, an idea developed by South San Francisco and the County of San Mateo. And they said, we want to do something to support small business better in North San Mateo County. As you probably know, there are a lot of resources that are directed in Redwood City and East Palo Alto, including Renaissance's other San Mateo County office, which is in Palo Alto. So they launched this center. I started here in July and our mission is to launch and grow small businesses in North San Mateo County. I see that I should have this here. We do this by offering programming on business planning, marketing, financial planning and human resources. Our goal is to work with people who want to start businesses. We are focused on those who have not had traditional access to labor markets or those who have chosen to stay at home, for example, who have other challenges. But we are also focused on people who have ideas that they want to bring them to life. So we work with cottage food businesses. We work with cleaning businesses, childcare, restaurants, all kinds of businesses. So if you have an idea and you know somebody who wants to start a business, we can help them. Our focus of area, our area of focus is the North San Mateo County. We are working in South San Francisco, Daly City, Colma, Pacifica, Brisbane and San Bruno. There will ultimately be a, a location. It's going to be at 366 Grand Avenue in South San Francisco. The intention was that it would open a little bit sooner, but we will be opening the physical location in January, which is maybe good because of the COVID. Right now we're working online. All of our office are, all of our programming is online. All of our programming is free as we are supported and funded by the county and the city. One of the things that we do besides offering consultations, workshops and networking is we sometimes work with the county or other agencies to provide grants. Right now we still have a digital tools and training grant, actually a number of businesses in Daly City have managed to take advantage of this, but would really like to see a couple more. This grant is going through September 30th. So if you know a business owner, typically micro businesses are going to be more of the focus here. Who could use some website or e-commerce development, could use some new computer hardware and marketing support? The qualification is that business owners either have to live in or have a business. It's like zip codes, but Daly City is included and they need a gross household. They come under 120,000. So if anybody here wants to share this, I will happily share this presentation with you after this. We have a lot of workshops every month. We are halfway through our September workshops. Tomorrow we've got two workshops, Starting Your Consulting Business and Access to Capital. We work in English and in Spanish. Our goal is to meet people where they are. We would also like to start offering services in Tagalog and perhaps also Mandarin or Cantonese because we know that those are high need languages in our area. Our first big event is coming up on September 25th. It will be located and taking place at the same time as the South San Francisco City Hall 101st Birthday Celebration. Because what I can say is that our organization loves to have long names for things. So we are having the Renaissance Centennial pop-up, starting on September 25th from 12 to 5:00 PM. It will actually be right downtown, South San Francisco. So you guys are welcome to join us. We'd love to support our small businesses. We have a couple of businesses from Daly City who are going to be there, La Casita Goods. She's providing Latin stickers and products and from Trash to Beauty, which is providing, creating crafts and jewelry and other things from recycled materials. So some really interesting things going on. And finally, I'd love to introduce you and invite you all to our first ever networking mixer. So as I said, we're pretty new to the county and we're really trying to get everybody excited. And so what we're having is our first networking mixer. It's going to feature Liza Normandy from South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce. And as I'm sure many of you know, Felicia Leong from the Daly City Colma Chamber of Commerce. We also have a couple of small business owners from South San Francisco who will be there. And we are hoping to have more Daly City representation next month. So we'd love to have you join us. The mixer will be taking place on September 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It's online. It's free. You can join it just at that link, tinyurl.com/brcmixer. So just as a summary, we are providing workshops. We are providing consultations. And we are providing networking opportunities for small businesses in North San Mateo County, including Daly City. This is our contact information. I check this every day. And so I would be happy to help you, serve you. And please follow us on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. We're sharing a lot of information there that's helpful to businesses and that can really support our economic development. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda, for that presentation. And I remember when the, the county was working to create and fund this type of program within the northern part of San Mateo County. And so it's great to see it running. What naturally comes to mind is it would be wonderful if Renaissance could work collaboratively with our Small Business Commission that we have here in the city of Daly City. You know, we have small business owners that are part of that commission. And I could see kind of a natural alignment around your goals and also what they see on the ground to enhance and support small businesses in our community. And one of, one question I do have, and then I'll get to council member Benaventura, is in regards to your events, I know that you have a pop-up in South San Francisco. Do you foresee doing pop-ups in the other cities within District Five in the future?
I would very much like to. It will be a matter of space. So if you have a space that you think that you guys could provide to organize that pop-up, then I would absolutely happily organize such an event.
Wonderful. I think that there's definitely places in Daly City in which we could host something like that to support our small businesses, though.
Great. I would love to meet your Small Business Commission. Fantastic.
Wonderful. Councilmember Benaventura.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Anthony, for this presentation. I think this is something we really need. The question I have is, you know, I get a question about this often, which is, you know, some people, they really have some great ideas on starting a business. The only problem is the, the, the funding and the need to, you know, have that initial sort of seed money to get going. And I'm wondering, is any of your programming devoted to addressing that in terms of how they could get the funding? Is there a, I don't know, a relationship building with the networks of some of the investors? Is that some, some part of your, you know, a programming as well? But I'm just really interested in getting them over the barrier, the hump of having that initial seed money to start a business and how could you help people in that regard? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for asking that question because that is something that comes up a lot in, in the discussions I have with business owners as well. We are information providers and we are connectors. So what we do is provide information about and workshops on what do you need to become creditworthy? Not only that, but what you need in order to prepare yourself to take a loan? What kind of documents do you need? What kind of plan do you need? Our business planning classes focus a lot on getting people creditworthy, but we also have developed over the many years partnerships with community development finance institutions and other traditional finance institutions like banks and credit unions to provide such funding. So Renaissance itself does not provide that funding, but we have partnered with Working Solutions. We have partnered with Pacific Community Ventures and a number of other organizations that are working to get capital in startup capital in the hands of business owners. We have a workshop tomorrow in Spanish on access to capital and we also have one coming up in, at the end of October in English. And so we definitely encourage people to sign up for that. They can also email me anytime and I would be happy to introduce them to our partners.
Okay, great. And then the other question I had was, is regarding, is this tailored to specific kinds of businesses? That your program is more designed to, to help? I mean, is it more, I don't know, restaurant, retail? Or do you even get into things like, you know, trading, crypto?
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm interested in seeing what kind of businesses people can, you know, talk about in this program.
So I like to say that we are the non-tech incubator. So we are working with businesses that you would see on Main Street more than businesses you would see at Wall Street. We have a focus on restaurants, retail, and basically the things that you think of when you're thinking of small business. But we would like to expand our work into some of the more formal business. So Renaissance just got the contract to start a small business development center from the SBA in, and it will be located, I think, in Redwood City. So we'll be adding that to San Mateo County. But we have not really worked in crypto. We have not really worked in tech. Those have not been our areas of focus because we feel that there's a lot of people who are already doing that. However, anybody can benefit from writing a business plan. So if people are interested in starting a business of any type, our business planning classes, I believe, can help.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Now more than ever, as you know, because of COVID, that people are trying to create, probably have already created during this period, the ideas, and then now they find a place to execute their ideas. So I've heard that from a lot of feedback in the community as well. Things have shifted for a lot of people. And as you know, more women have lost their jobs and as we know by statistics. So this shift is a perfect timing and I look forward to the support. I know a while ago, we used to have Renaissance here in Daly City and then not sure what happened, but it's nice to see a resurgence and to focusing on our small businesses. We never want to lose that ingenuity of our small businesses because that's what makes it tick here, Daly City and other cities. So I thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dos Magual.
Thank you, Amanda, for that great presentation. I think, you know, a lot of our work, especially in local government, we're trying to find ways to address equity. And I think what your program is providing is this filling of the gaps, you know, providing financial literacy for those that have never had the access to understanding how to start a business and to provide that cultural and social capital to help navigate, you know, entrepreneurs to get where they want to be. So I just want to say thank you for presenting and I like to, I hope to learn more and see more of what your, what the services are going to be provided. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have council member Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Amanda, again, I'd like to reiterate everyone, as they said, thank you so much for the presentation. I had this question before you finish, but I'm glad that I waited because you said the magic words. And that is, I'm looking forward to a collaboration with our Small Business Commission. Because you know, they're our resource. Matter of fact, we do have one commissioner online now. But to know that your particular organization exists and we look forward to the collaboration. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I just look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Thank you, Ms. Anthony, for your presentation. I know that, you know, it'll be great for you to work with our Small Business Commission. And in regards to having a pop-up in Daly City, we definitely welcome in and look forward to hosting you all in the future.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then feel free to share any information regarding any workshops so that staff can have it on hand and we can insert it within our newsletters, social media, Facebook and et cetera.
Super. Who would be the best person to reach out for that?
I would say Mr. Steven Stolti.
Great.
Oh my goodness, I didn't move. Our lights are conserving energy, but yeah, he's on there and wonderful work. And we look forward to see how we could partner with you all.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Now moving on to proclaiming September 2021 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And we have Dr. Chaucer who's here. He is the Director of Radiation Oncology Department with Sedan Medical Center. And so let me read our proclamation this evening for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Prostate, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men. And whereas American Cancer Society estimates there will be 248,530 new cases of prostate cancer in the United States in 2021, resulting in an estimated 34,130 deaths. And whereas it is estimated that 25,880 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year and is estimated that 4,140 California men will die from this disease this year. And whereas the incidence of prostate cancer is almost 80% higher in non-Hispanic black men than in non-Hispanic white men for reasons that remain unclear. And whereas early-stage prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and studies suggest strong genetic predisposition may be responsible for 5% to 10% of prostate cancer. And whereas late-stage prostate cancer commonly spreads to the bones, which can cause pain in the hips, spine, ribs and other areas in the body. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 30% when it spreads to the other parts of the body. And whereas risk factors for prostate cancer are increasing with age, African ancestry, a family history of the disease and certain inherited genetic conditions. And whereas American Cancer Society recommends that men should have a conversation with their healthcare provider and make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. And whereas the city of Daly City joins communities across the nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, I, Justin Manalo, Mayor and members of the City Council of City of Daly City do hereby proclaim this month of September 2021 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And thank you as always, Dr. Chaucer, for being here to receive the proclamation and for your, your work on this important issue for our community and really reminding everyone to, to get tested and prevention is key. You have the floor, Dr. Chaucer.
First, I want to thank all of you again for recognizing that prostate cancer is a public health problem and we need to pay attention to it. Especially, I thank you because I know there's so much on your table these days with COVID-19, getting kids back to school, making sure that everybody is educated. And yet I appreciate the fact that you fully realize that prostate cancer cells still multiply and people still continue to get prostate cancer and can die with it. So I really do thank you for calling attention again to the fact that men must pay attention and talk with their healthcare providers about getting tested.
Thank you, Dr. Chaucer. I see council member Benaventura.
Dr. Chaucer, could you tell us the members of the public? At what age should we consider getting tested? How often should we get tested and what is the simplicity of the test?
The test is actually just a blood test called the PSA, Prosthetic Specific Antigen Level, which is a pretty good indicator. And it usually is advised, as was noted in the proclamation, that you should get tested by age 50 or at least discuss it with your healthcare provider. If you have a family history for a father, brother that has had prostate cancer or if you have, if you're African-American, we know that the incidence has increased. Definitely those groups should consider getting tested at an earlier age. Age 45 is recommended. And again, I think there's a little variability. Some people feel as though you should even get tested earlier. But by all means, by age 50, and if you have any of the indications that we, you, we just mentioned, the earlier age.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. That's a great question, Councilmember Benaventura. And thank you for informing the public, Dr. Chaucer. Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Chaucer, thank you first of all for all your hard work and keeping all those patients alive in our community around Seaton and all your hard work. I have a quick question that I noticed that even some is true. I knew a friend that had the prostate cancer and they were saying they didn't see hereditary, but now it's even considered maybe environmental factors can even be affected by prostate cancer? Is there some correlation or they did still looking into that research?
I think they're still working on that aspect as far as the environment. But one thing that you did mention that should be emphasized, there are some syndromes. And if you have relatives who have had cancers, particularly pancreatic cancer, colon cancer, there is an increased incidence in, that you have of, of developing prostate cancer. It's called the Lynch Syndrome and we're finding out that those people should have more active surveillance. The other area is that we've heard about BRCA genes for breast cancer. It's also noted now that patients with BRCA gene or if there's a family member who's had a breast cancer is BRCA gene positive, you should probably discuss with your physician about getting tested earlier as well. So we're learning a lot more about the epidemiology and these factors for prostate cancer. And the indications probably over the next few years will, will grow as we learn.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chaucer. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
I want to thank you and all the council members and mayor for all your support that you give us.
You're welcome. I see Vice Mayor Dos Magual.
Hello, Dr. Chaucer. Thank you for your presentation. Can you speak on how maybe race or racism has played a role in terms of black men and it's a high incidence of colon cancer?
Well, to the degree that maybe access to care is one of the major problems that I see. And I hope that those are the barriers that we can break down. I think once the diagnosis is achieved, then we have to worry about financial barriers to getting adequate treatment. But those are aspects of care that I think we're all familiar with. And hopefully those of us who are providing care or those who are in government can help us make sure that everybody gets adequate care.
Thank you, Dr. Chaucer. As a person that loves comic books, I know that Chad Bosman, who played Black Panther, was only 43 when he passed away from colon cancer. And you know, it's crazy because that's, that's about my age. And I urge people out there, you know, I know it's sometimes feeling embarrassed or the sense of masculinity that prevents you from going to get tested, but I think with the statistics that are out there, I urge the public to, you know, take this into strong consideration and, you know, get, get the early signs on early and understand your health. Thank you, Dr. Chaucer.
And thank you again.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chaucer, for your continued work and care for our community and being there at Sedan Hospital. And we, we know that we need to continue to educate our community members to get tested. So thank you once again and thank you for all your work. Now we are moving on to item number three, proclaiming August 2021 as Black History Month, Black Business Month. We were on recess in August. And so today we will be honoring the two black businesses in our city of Daly City. So whereas August, we are proclaiming Black Business Month in August 2021. Whereas August is National Black Business Month and we recognize the black-owned businesses in Daly City and across the country. And whereas historian John William Templeton and engineer Frederick E. Jordan Senior founded National Black Business Month in August 2004 to drive the policy agenda affecting 2.6 million African-American businesses. And whereas black business owners account for 10% of US businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, which amounts to approximately 2 million companies owned by African-Americans nationwide. Whereas nearly 40% of black-owned businesses are in healthcare and social assistance, repair and maintenance and laundry services, while other categories include advertising firms, auto dealerships, consulting services, restaurants, barber shops, beauty salons. consulting services, restaurants, barber shops, beauty salons, and more. And whereas among cities, New York has the most black-owned businesses in the US, followed by Atlanta, and the highest ratio of black-owned businesses is in Washington DC, whereas where 28% of all businesses are black-owned. And whereas the growth of black-owned franchise businesses have been explosive, with over 30% of franchise businesses were black-owned, up from 20% from five years previous. Now therefore, I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and the members of City Council hereby proclaim August 2021 as Black Business Month in the city of Daly City in support of African-American-owned businesses and recognize those businesses as influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods that make Daly City a vibrant community in which we live, work, and visit. And so today, we have two business owners that will be accepting the proclamation. And we have the owner of Keith's Chicken and Waffles, Keith Richardson. And we also have Charles Hill, our Daly City Small Business Commissioner, who's a black business owner here in Daly City. Thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I see raised hand by Mr. Hill.
Yes, let me say, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for recognizing this very important month and specifically African-American businesses throughout the country, but specifically in Daly City and the Bay Area. It, I think, much has been said, you know, we suffer from serious healthcare issues, access to capital, which we discussed earlier, and other, you know, social conditions that, you know, just make operating a business successfully a challenge. But I think with support and recognition that demonstrated tonight, you know, is just one step forward in making progress so that all businesses, regardless of the ethnicity, can be successful and create jobs and invest in the communities in which we serve. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Hill, for being here and for your entrepreneurial spirit and your leadership to be on our Small Business Commission.
Thank you.
I see Councilmember Sylvester and then Councilmember D. Giovanni, and also if Mr. Richardson would like to say a few words, I also would yield the floor to him.
Let the council members speak first. Okay?
Sure. Of course.
Great, yes.
So it was Councilmember Sylvester, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and then Vice Mayor Das Magwell. And we'll say the best for last, Mr. Richardson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Richardson, I was hoping that you would say a few words before I say something, but that's okay. I'm going to talk about you anyway. I'd like to first start off by saying, it gives me great pleasure to move forward in honoring black businesses. And I'm glad that my colleagues all agreed. I think this is very important. I'll start off with Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill, I think I met you approximately three years ago when you were outside of council chambers. You were all dressed up in, well, not actually dressed up, but like in a little jacket, and you came up and said a few words to me. But it's those few words that you said, and it intrigued me to say, I need to find out more about this particular person. So as you would have it, a few years went by, and I learned more about you. And I learned about how you started your business and how you didn't want to take advantage of the previous owner, but gave him basically his asking price for the business, where they, other folks tried to get him down. And you also made mention in your statement tonight regarding African-Americans, and you used to work in a financial institution and to which they had problems with getting capital. So that was very important, and I never forgot those things. And that's why I gladly appointed you to the Small Business Commission here in Daly City. I want to say I appreciate everything you do. I appreciate you being there for the community, and I wish you the best in your endeavors and your small business, and hoping that it will grow much further. Mr. Richardson, there's many, there's many things to say about you, but something intrigued me about you, and that is, you're traveling around to find the various recipes for that fried chicken that you make. And I know you're not giving it up, but it's obvious that how good your chicken is. And to be so young and basically an entrepreneur, you never gave up the fight. And I appreciate you being there. I want to let you know, I have not forgotten about the issue you spoke to me about, and you'll probably be offline, but I am going to bring it up tonight. I basically want to support all of our businesses. And as Mr. Hill says, no matter if it's what ethnicity you are, we should support all of our businesses. So to the both gentlemen, I congratulate you both. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Now it's Councilmember D. Giovanni and then Vice Mayor Das Magwell. And I did see Councilmember Benaventura take his camera off earlier.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, hi, Keith. How you doing? I've seen you in a long time. I have to stop by now, even though it's COVID. So that Mr. Hill knows, I've known Keith for many, many years, even before he came to Daly City. And I hope you try it, Mr. Hill. Try that chicken, because it is a special recipe. And I'm glad you're trying it, because I know it's been really hard on both of you about your businesses. It's been really hard, the laundry and also the restaurant business. And we do have, I hope you do know that we have resources available. And please don't be shy, because, you know, as you know, being in the financial sector, Mr. Hill, and Keith, that, you know, we all need to work together, and that our Economic Development Guide has resources as well to reach out to for grants. And you're, you know, well-owned businesses, because it's a struggle. It's a struggle. And I want to keep you open, and if there's parking issues, or if there's people issues, or any kind of issues, then you bring it to us, and we're going to help you solve and partner with you, because that's what you're supposed to do as family. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're family. And I know, Mr. Hill, working on the Business Commission, and then reaching out to Keith. There you go, right there. And connect and see what you need, and we're here for you, Keith, and your family. And Mr. Hill, you as well. And so blessed.
Thank you.
That you're in Daly City, and we want to nurture that and make things better, or especially around the areas where it looks dreary, it looks bad, or get grants and make top of the hill, make the area around Bart and where you're at, Keith. I mean, it's got to look better. It's got to be more vibrant and to attract people and get some parking over there. But it's really a blessing, and I know that all our businesses need help, but just know, we're there for you, and we can do that too. So we know the history. We know the struggles. And it's a small way of recognition for struggles that still continue, but that's part of those barriers, and I think we can do it in Daly City. Right?
Thank you.
Yes. The support. I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you. I appreciate it. The support has always been there. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magwell, and then Councilmember Benaventura.
I just want to thank you, Commissioner Hill and Mr. Richardson. To me, I think when we talk about Black Business Month, it's Black Business Month every single day. I think when we talk about access, and, you know, we've been talking about through the North County Business Resource Center and the health issues, is all related to the barriers and challenges and structural racism that still continues today. And I think this is what this this proclamation, what it symbolizes, is that, you know, I remember Chris Rock saying, in one of his comedy pieces, the difference between rich and wealthy, right? Rich, you can get broke in a matter of a summer, but wealth is something that can be carried on from generation to generation. And I think that's where we have to get to in our communities, is understanding how to navigate the financial literacy, understanding the wealth that can be generated, not just within our generation, but generations to come. And so thank you for your work, your time and your passion, and a big thank you from my heart to yours.
Thank you. Thank you, man. Appreciate it, Roger.
Thank you. Councilmember Benaventura.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. To both gentlemen, let me start with Commissioner Hill. Commissioner, I have to say that I have actually been watching you at work in the Small Business Commission. I appreciate and admire your questioning, your preparation, and the way you argue for certain points. I remember this one time, you argued for about half an hour on the issue of garbage in Daly City affecting businesses. That's the level of insight and detail that I think is much needed in our Small Business Commission in participation in government, because you are unafraid to address and highlight and shine the light on issues that need to be dealt with for our small businesses to succeed. So I appreciate your advocacy and your service on the commission, and it's deserving that you're being recognized today.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, I would say that, so it's been a while since I've been to your establishment, but it's not just the chicken, but it's actually the sides that I enjoy really the most, especially the candied yams that you serve. But I will also say that I'm tired of eating my food in my car. And so I would really love it if you had more space, if you had an opportunity to expand your business on the street, because your business is growing, and clearly, everybody in Daly City knows the chicken waffles at your place. And so I'm hoping that we can move to a situation in Daly City where we can expand the small businesses. And I'm actually curious, if you're willing to tell us, how your business is going right now? What do you see with respect to the impacts of COVID? Is it getting any better? Or are we sort of on a stalemate or declining?
I did an article for Palo Alto about my business during COVID, and COVID actually helped my business, because we were already basically set up for takeout. Like you said, a lot of people don't want to eat their food in the car. I would love to have a sit-down. So that's something that we are exploring, maybe a different location to be able to serve the hot food on, you know, onsite. Our place is just not set up for that. We need the extra space for inventory. Right now, what we're seeing is the restaurant business is more, this probably is the hardest time. We got lucky during COVID. We're blessed, but now it is actually harder because the cost of goods have skyrocketed. We had to raise our prices. And that's what we don't want to do. We don't want to discourage people from patronizing because we're, you know, too expensive. But, I mean, the cost of goods have went up. The availability of some goods have been minimal. So what you see as far as the restaurant owners, they're having to go to multiple stores just to find the basic necessities to operate on a daily basis. And that's what, I mean, I'm not the only one, but almost restaurant owners, I meet them at Restaurant Depot, Costco. We have the same conversations. The products are not being brought in here. From what I understand is that they're stuck on the ships or somebody's holding up. So it's very, right now is a very, very challenging time. We do have still a lot of community support. So, I mean, that's what's keeping us surviving right now, is the community. People are still coming patronizing, but it's just, it's harder on the business owner right now. And what we see is that most of the business owners are doing mostly a lot of the work to substitute, to offset the cost of the goods, of the rising cost of the goods. And the workforce also actually is kind of minimal right now. It's hard to find good help. Maybe we can find some resources to attract more, you know, candidates for jobs. But for me personally, it's a challenging time, more challenging than any other time in my five years of being at Daly City. And we just made our five-year anniversary as well, so we're proud of that. But it's just a few little adjustments we've got to make. Glenn and Mayor, we talked about, you know, issues, but those have been ongoing. But the most thing is that the cost of things went up as everybody's feeling it.
Okay. Thank you for sharing. I appreciate it. And thank you for your work.
Thank you so much for all you do, and I think it's important to hear, if there's, you need workers, if there's a way for us to share that on our website, promote kind of local hires. But I know, you know, you mentioned an ongoing issue and in regards to being able to have folks park within the area. And that's something that, you know, it will work with Richard Chuon in regards to, you know, making sure that there's access to your stores. And Devin, I've been talking with him, and I think it's also the taquerias issue right next door to one another. And most especially, you know, if it's, you know, an issue around parking and just being able to move cars in and out now that there's folks that are just purchasing from you to go. I think that, you know, we should support small businesses like yourselves, and we'll continue to dialogue, and hopefully, we'll get to that resolve. Because, you know, it's so important that businesses like yours survive. And if you're communicating to us around those needs, we'll work together to ensure that if it's around making sure that, you know, that parking space around your area moves and that that's actually how people pick up the food and go. You know, we'll work together with you in that resolve, because we need to continue to support small businesses like yourself. And, you know, I'll say it again, I mean, with my pregnancy, that's what I was craving. That is going to be a part of my story. I was like, oh my gosh, I'm craving fried chicken. And I was like, all right. And so I understand that parking situation. I was like, oh my goodness, like, where can I park? And so to keep that moving, if it's like 15-minute parkings or whatnot, to help both you and the taqueria, you know, we'll work with Director Chuon on that, so.
Ultimately, the goal is to, for us to find a location that's accessible for people, because that place, that street is just not made for that, honestly. It's a hazard. A lot of people double-park. You got fire trucks, ambulances all day long. And people getting angry because it's a backup to Janipacero. So ultimately, the goal is to find a location that people can sit down, enjoy the food. There's no double parking, breaking the law, anything like that. So that will be the goal.
Love that. Put it in the universe and celebrate together. Thank you. Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you. Since the topic came up, and I'm glad I have Mr. Richardson still on board, we have not forgotten you. And I don't know if this is the proper time, but I'd like to request our public works and to conduct a traffic study regarding the 200 block of San Pedro to which your business resides, along with the next-door neighbor, Los Matates. We want to support our small businesses. And when folks have to double park, which creates a hazard. And I've seen it on and on every day. We have to address this. You got one hour parking meters throughout the whole block, so someone can just park there and park for an hour. And if we don't enforce it, what they'll do is they'll feed the meter all day, which contributes to the double parking. I don't like it and I think we need to do something about it. So I'm requesting that we agendize this item or Public Works follow up on this issue, at least at a minimum, to get two green zones in front of the two restaurants there. I'm not going to call out the other businesses, but we're talking about two food restaurants who their very survival is to provide food to the customers on a daily basis. So, Mr. Richardson, we have not forgotten. Okay, I know Mr. Hill, you, you don't have that problem down at your end, sir. But we will do whatever we can. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Claire. Appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Richardson, we have brought this up to staff. And Ms. Maltby can attest to it and Director Chu, so.
Madam Mayor, just real quick. So Keith, did you reach out to our economic development guy yet?
My brother's taking, handling everything, so I have to have a conversation with him. I, I let him handle a lot of stuff because I'm trying to. I'm running from store to store every.
Well, just tell him if he needs some support or whatever. We got a great ECD guy here, Brandon Phipps, and he'd be glad to help. Just reach out and then the city manager and everybody would be a pleasure to help you expand your business and find you the spot that you need.
Yes, that would be great. Okay.
I'm sure they'd be on board.
I appreciate that.
And Mr. Hill, you got some participation over here.
Right. If, if I may, I, I apologize for being naive and not knowing some of the best chicken and waffles is actually here in Daly City. I've been having to go to Oakland. But I, I do want to say this is a great opportunity and I would like to connect with you, Mr. Richardson. And one of the Small Business Commissioners, the Chair of the Small Business Commission is a commercial real estate broker. And one of the things that we've discussed, the, the, the whole commission about doing is trying to figure out the exact needs of some of our small businesses and how we can support and help them. And I'd just like to learn more about your business and ways in which my personal resources as well as my relationships, you know, we can, can assist you in what you're trying to do in Daly City.
Okay, sounds great.
Maybe offline, I can get your information at another point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank, thank you both so much, Mr. Hill, for all your service on our Small Business Commission. And thank you for Mr. Richardson, Keith and Devin always holding it down and, and the chicken and waffles. And we hope that you will continue to expand and, and grow. And we value both of you and your work and we look forward to, thank you, we look forward. All the good things ahead.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
God bless you both.
Alright, thank you. We sign it off now.
We are now on presentation number four. It is proclaiming September 2021 as National Preparedness Month. We have Mr. Sean Cavanagh from the, who is the Deputy Fire Chief for the North County Fire Authority. So we are proclaiming September as National Preparedness Month. Whereas during September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas with COVID-19 pandemic in 2021, 2020, the South Bay fires of 2020 and the yearly winter storms in our county, all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. Whereas a loss of life and property can greatly be reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these life-saving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other services service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Daly City residents. And whereas a community should take steps to help them before a disaster strikes, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program. And whereas this important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of a disaster. Now therefore, I, Justin Simonalo, Mayor, and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all Daly City residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster. And here to speak on this very important topic is Mr. Sean Cavanagh.
Well, thank you. And on behalf of North County Fire Authority and the personnel from Daly City Mayor and City Councilmembers, we appreciate recognizing the proclamation. And this year, the, the preparedness theme is prepare and protect. And kind of as you read through that, that proclamation, really what it is, it's, it's still where, raise awareness for the steps for individuals, families, and communities to be ready for a disaster and emergency should they happen. It's really about being prepared in, in advance. And that's, that's the main key and the main goal for why it's a national recognized event that they do in September. So it's just to talk about in the communities, talk about with your families, talk about with the agencies, about with every entity, be it a, be it a government agency or a public agency, or be it in a private agency or your family, you can talk about the, the disasters that may occur, especially living in here in California, as you know, with what we see with all the different events that we can have, from wildfires, earthquakes, to floods, to major disasters, it's always good to have those conversations ahead of time. So thank you very much to, to everybody once again for, for doing the proclamation.
Thank you so much for that work. I see two hands raised, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and then Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh. I know that now more than ever, because the wildfires are like larger than ever, or start earlier than ever, climate change. I mean, California is really, really having a tough time here. And the fire can only be stretched so thin. I know the rotations, the 14-day rotations that have to happen with our firefighters. And it's really tough on everyone, the things that people don't see when they go to those wildfires, it's, it's really tough. So with great appreciation and the best that people can be prepared, it helps all of you, I'm sure, right? And then we just had the, the 9/11 anniversary. And even with tragedy, we never know what's going to be around the corner. So preparedness is key. And hopefully we can get that out to everybody, because I, I believe, is if I'm correct, that it's good to be prepared for 72 hours, is that correct? In a disaster for, by ourselves?
It's, it's a good, it's a good number for a couple of days, correct? If you can have a three-day preparedness for food, water, clothing, everything like that, absolutely.
Yeah, so I know we have a small CERT team by the Franciscan, but we need to really like ramp that up. I know we have COVID, but, so that everybody individually, families will know what to do. And I know a little bit of COVID, we got a little bit off track. And if we can get that back on track, it'd be great because, because we don't know. And the earthquakes as well, so. Thank you. I thank to everyone in North County Fire, Daly City firefighters, first responders. Incredible, big prayers for this year. And I know next year is going to be preparedness earlier. And heartbreaking, totally heartbreaking, but you never know, as, as a firefighter's daughter is, you never know what you're going to run into. So I appreciate it. Please thank everyone.
And I, I think it's good, if you, if I don't mind for one second, you brought up a good point to what's happening this summer, especially with our folks. So our folks go out and they've been going out since beginning of July on a 14-day rotations with the different apparatus and equipment that we have out. And so we've had the same equipment, not only from our, our cities, but throughout San Mateo County. But I would like to stress to everybody that your firefighters have been doing this since July. And we're, we're doing another rotation tomorrow for two weeks. And hopefully, maybe that'll be the last one, we'll get some stuff back. But I think you guys should all be proud of, of what your fire department has done and the personnel who have stepped up for a statewide issue and a statewide mission that is out there. But with that said, it's important to note too, that at no time have, you know, the, the, I should say, our priorities is to make sure our level of service within Daly City is always there. That's, that's, that hasn't changed at all. So full staffing, nothing's changed, we just get folks to volunteer to go. So thank you very much for, for recognizing.
And let's just let people also know that these, these firefighters actually volunteer. They're not put on a rotation like by name or, or by seniority. They actually step up to do it. That is, that's incredible. And then like you said, they don't skip a beat here. So with all the auto accidents and everything else that goes on. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I, I want to share how important it is about this proclamation. Not only its importance, but it's a reminder to all of us to be prepared and to think about preparedness. What I'm about to tell you, it's kind of hilarious to me, but I'll share it with you and you, you folks might find it funny as well. Just about a year ago, I was cleaning out downstairs in, in my garage and I found some army rations. And to which I remember getting those army rations in the 1970s, perhaps before Mr. Cavanagh was born. So I was thinking about preparation then. I know it's no good now. But then I was just down there three days ago and I was looking around again and I asked my wife, what are these two buckets? And she says, well, that's food for preparation. I think these were five gallon buckets for food. So I had to check the date on it and I think I bought those 15 years ago. So I think it's a 25-year shelf lifespan. So you've now given me the impetus to make sure I check the date and if, if not, throw them out and get some more. So thank you so much for the reminder.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I do see someone, I think, in the attendees, is it, is it for this item that they'd like to make a comment? Just making sure. Don Dugan, is, do you have a comment on specifically the September National Preparedness?
Hello?
Hi, do you have a comment on the National Preparedness Month?
I, no, I, I don't. I have a, a comment about, about what's happening at Westmore Park.
Okay, so that will be quite later on in the discussion. I just, so that's a public comment further down the line.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much. You know, it's so important to ensure that everyone is prepared, educated, because it saves lives. And then also ensures that, you know, we, we are prepared when unfortunate circumstances occur. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers. Have a good evening.
Thank you. So we are now moving on. We've just finished our presentations. For those of you who are watching, we are now moving on to the approval of minutes for regular meeting of July 26, 2021. I'd like to actually provide a, a change in the minutes to delineate some specificity on page six. Requesting reconsideration of zone change in, in that area. And I just want to make sure Madam City Clerk is notating and tracking this.
Oh, yes, we are.
Okay, so thank you very much. It says, Mayor Manala expressed disappointment in the following council members who chose not to postpone the decision on this matter during the June 28 council meeting. Please delineate, express disappointment in the following council members, Sylvester and Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Noted.
Thank you very much.
With, with those modifications, I make a motion to adopt those minutes.
Okay, I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull two items.
What items are they?
Item number 11 and item number 12. Thank you.
Are there any other items being pulled by my colleagues? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the items except for item number 11 and 12?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Item number 11, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement with Escapodan Filipino Martial Arts SF for use of certain portions of the Dolger Art Center, 200 North Gate Avenue. Do we have staff here to present on this? Or what is the question, Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Um, well, actually, yeah, I'd like for Rose to probably present the lease. And then I have a few questions that I'd like to entertain to ask Mr. Batista. He's here.
He's here.
He's here, yeah, thank you.
And this is an item before the City Council to execute a license agreement with Escapodan Filipino Martial Arts. And it is to license two rooms at the Dolger Art Center for a term of three years with the option of a one-year extension to be authorized by the city manager. The staff report does indicate the following fees that indicates a $3,156.16 a month license fee.
Thank you, Rose. Is Madam Mayor, is Mr. Batista available?
Mr. Batista is on, is on the line.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, Mr. Batista. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you.
I just have a few questions, if you don't mind. So I see here in the lease agreement, and probably have to refer to Rose as well, that in your, in the lease agreement, it says that you would like to alter and remove a wall in between?
Yes, between unit number seven and number nine.
Okay. And what would, so for a second transparency, Mr. Batista had called me a few months ago concerning probably renting a spot. But I knew that you had the ongoing agreement with the PBRC. So I didn't want to be, I wanted to be respectful of the PBRC. I think you really realized that at that time. I didn't want to step on their toes. So now that you're here with this, I have a few other questions as well. I know that you're a for-profit. Um, I know that you're a for-profit as well. And it says in here that it will be a commercial rate. Apparently, I believe, um, Ms. Zimmerman said that she, um, compared it through the pricing because of WSPA was a for-profit. Is that correct, Ms. Zimmerman? When we came up with the monies?
He used the comparable that, um, with the existing tenant at, at the, at the property, which is WSPA.
Yeah, thank you. And so, and then, uh, and just in short, Mr. Batista, I just want to clarify something that, that probably, you probably really weren't aware of, that, um,
Okay.
that when you, you know, when you were, first of all, I support your, obviously, your culture, the, it's beautiful what you do, the martial arts, to keep it alive for the children. And when you first were doing it, um, with the, with the PBRC, which is great. And then you guys moved to a different location. And were you still charging as a for-profit?
Yeah.
Cause I didn't see a, a business license up until recently, uh, for Daly City. Did I miss something or did?
I have a license there.
But not with, not in Daly City when you were working with the PBRC, right? Cause you're still, you're still giving glasses with the people. Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Batista. Go ahead. So when the news, go ahead, go ahead.
No, sorry, you cut out. I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Can you, is it still cutting out? With your connection?
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, I had to pick up some CPR stuff. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to get some, uh, trying to get to an area away from trees right now. Okay, is that better?
Yeah, much better. Are you okay? Can you hear?
Yes, yes.
So, uh, what I'm leading to is that, so in Daly City, along with everything else, and then maybe even Mayor Manala can clarify, cause, um, it's great that you have all these events here. But with an elected official, as Mayor Manalo had mentioned, she has project, uh, Sentinels, I believe it's called, Saints and Sentinels that you were working with. And that's an elected official that is a part, that is her, that is hers. So I didn't know if you knew that working with an elected official in our, in our city and the relationship that, um, that, that could be, I don't know if she was, if she doesn't mind answering or yourself, with Saints and Sentinels, were they raising funds in order to give you free classes, in order to have free classes for the ongoing scholarships, where you could get work, um, shops for martial arts?
I was teaching for free.
You were teaching for, for free, but I thought they were like, um, giving a, in partnership, and they, they were giving, uh, raising funds.
Oh, they are. And I've asked for those funds to be used towards other fundraisers that are used for Saints and Sentinels.
Uh, for Saints and Sentinels. But I don't know if you'd clarify that, that, um, relationship, because it's, um, in this particular item, uh, it is a conflict of interest because of the fact that we have, um, an elected official that, that is in concert with you in doing, um, events here in our city.
So I'd like to provide clarification, Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Pardon?
I'd like to provide some clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I, you know, and transparency with the community. When the attacks happened to the Asian American community in regards to the assault to the API community, community members came together on a very grassroots effort to combat the negativity to Asian Pacific Islanders that we have seen throughout what happened and transpired in twenty-twenty. And so the partnerships around who came to the table, who wanted to help and support the API community, whether it was the Lolas and that needed to have the opportunity to learn self-defense, whether it was a young person walking down the street, seeing what's happening on the national news. Or someone that was just going grocery shopping and just was, you know, feeling an agency and having those self-defense classes was something that was in collaboration for community effort. And it was a project called Saint and Sentinels with the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, with the Filipino Bayan Ihan Resource Center. And it really stemmed from being able to have empowerment and agency with a community that was being attacked to stop AAPI hate. And so, you know, uh, you're bringing forth a situation in which I'm trying not to under, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, because all of that work was around being able to support young people, support elders, and to have the opportunity to have these classes from community members like Escavo Da An that has, that provide these services. I mean, that's what community is all about. When something happens, you join together, unite together, and you support one another. And I feel extremely appalled at these questionings at this point from an organization that was devoting their time and from a collective effort of community members of the Asian American community. It was not only for the Filipino community, it was actually for the whole API community that was suffering and also just trying to heal and, and, and gain courage as a, as a unit together by garnering and capitalizing on being able to utilize tools for themselves. Whether I saw, I saw Lolas that came through, aunties, and I also saw other community members that were not of Asian American descent that wanted to be able to have these self-defense classes. The, the topic I had right now is for them as a association, an organization, it's, it's separate from this. This, that's a lease. I, I, this is so confusing why you're bringing this up to the floor at the moment.
Madam Mayor, if I may explain.
When it's really something completely separate.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I, well, I, this has nothing to do, just so you know, I support the efforts, as you know, of the anti-Asian coming together. The issue is you have your name attached to an organization that is associated with doing it all together. And maybe you didn't even know, but as an elected official, we are not supposed to use our names. That has nothing to do with the action. It has nothing to do with the sentiment of, of force. You know, coming together as a community, because that's what Daly City does. It's the, the fact is, we are here at a lease, which is a monetary decision, who has an ongoing relationship with your organization as our mayor, which is an elected official.
Let me be very clear.
Your name is on.
Let me be very clear. Excuse me, um, Councilmember.
That is a conflict of interest.
Excuse me, let me be very clear. You say my organization.
Well, that's what you said publicly.
Me. You said my organization.
You did. You said it publicly here on a council meeting.
It, it's a project of the collective, of the.
Said your project. And you even said it on the news.
Of the.
And it was a, yes, news clip. And that you have your name on that Saints and Sentinels. It's not the action of it. It's that you probably didn't know, but we as elected officials are not supposed to have our name attached and work with other people in our city. It is a conflict of interest, because you won't continue your relationship with this gentleman who is going for a lease, which involves monies, which you guys are all working together, including, which is great, in, in action. But to have your name on it is what is the conflict of interest. And it is on the website. It was on when you guys worked together with PBRC. So I am respectfully asking at this time that you recuse yourself on the vote, because your name is on Saints and Sentinels, which did take part in together. And we are elected officials and we're not supposed to use our name for any, any use in that manner. So that's what I have to say for this now, and I have other things to say, but I believe that other people need to address at this time. And it's not personal. I support the effort.
Uh, Councilmember. Councilmember Ventura, and then who's next?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I wanna, you know, I, I wanna commend actually Joseph and, um, Batista and the whole, uh, Escavo Don or organization. I think, um, they have done a tremendous amount, uh, in the community. And I don't think it's right to attack them, um, by these kind of, uh, questions. And, um, I tried to weave in somehow, um, a conflict of interest um, that I think is absolutely misplaced. And, um, I think that what Mr. Batista has done, um, is he's done it the right way. He went through, um, the city government. He went through the city attorney. Um, he, I understand, um, met with them. Um, they detailed, they hashed out, uh, a proper legal lease that, um, um, has been worked out by both sides. Um, it's transparent because it's on display today at a public hearing. Um, and so I don't see an issue of, um, any impropriety or any conflict. Um, I, 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 I think this has all been clearly stated and there's, uh, what the organization has done traditionally, uh, meaning Mr. Batista and Escavo Don, is supporting kids, supporting, um, uh, young adults, uh, to defend themselves. And they have lent their expertise, and I'm hearing for free, in the education and training of a lot of, um, Asian American kids, Filipino kids, any, any of the kids who, uh, really, who want to take, uh, benefit and training from Escavo Don. So I fully support, um, this, uh, agreement. And so, um, I'm making a motion to approve it.
You know what? I'm not finished yet, Mr. Buena Vatura.
I have a motion.
You cannot do that. I'm not finished. You should recuse yourself because your relationship.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm not finished.
Councilmember Di Giovanni.
I am not finished.
Deciding officer, please calm and lower your voice.
No, I do not have to. I am reading. I am not finished. I am not finished.
I, I seconded.
You cannot do that. And you should recuse yourself, Councilmember Buena Vatura, because you were on the board, uh, during the time that PBRC was having the martial arts.
You're out of order at this time, because there's a.
You need to recuse yourself for conflict of interest. And I'm sure that FPPC is a conflict of interest.
Second on the floor.
And it says here, scholarships from Saints and Sentinels. For recent fund reason.
Council.
From our Saints and Sentinels launch, events in Daly City and San Francisco. We are able to cover the costs.
I'm going to call the question at this time.
For interested community members.
I'm gonna call the question.
Organizers, Cultivate Labs.
It's for a good.
PBRC, Mayor Justina Manalo. There's your conflict of interest. You're telling me.
Attorney.
Mayor Manalo.
Zimmerman.
You need to recuse yourself.
I have asked, I have asked.
Saints and Sentinels has money raised.
Call the question at this time.
Run. Here it is. You posted it. Right here, Saints and Sentinels.
City Attorney.
Fundraising, right here. It's a conflict of interest. It has nothing to do with the actions.
Giovanni, please.
You don't, you don't cut me off. I was respectful enough to let Mr. Buena Vatura speak.
There is a first and a second, and you're out of order.
No, because he went for that. I, I was doing out of courtesy to let him speak, but then he used that opportunity, when in fact, he needs to recuse himself for this relationship with PBRC, like you said you were going to recuse yourself for the PIT contract and the PBRC contract. What is the difference, Buena Vatura? This is monies. This is monies. When we're involving monies. Fundraising, fundraising. This is what we're talking about. Mr. Batista is a great guy. He does great things, but he crossed the line. He didn't know with the relationship. The Mayor Manalo.
Giovanni, at this time, can you, I am asking.
Right here. It says right here, you raise the funds.
Basically dated.
Saints and Sentinels and has your name right here, Mayor Justina Manalo. That is a conflict of interest.
My goodness.
Where did the money go?
Member.
Where did the money go that you fundraised?
City Attorney.
Where did the money go? Don't go, City Attorney. It's a conflict of interest.
No, I'm, I'm.
It's up to us, the city council.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask.
You need to do the right thing, Mayor Manalo. Had no business renting our city site.
Out of order and I'm.
No other residents. Social justice? Let me tell you about social justice. No other person could rent that site that day that you rented it. Is that equity? You used your title to rent a site. Do you know what the, to the community, the people of all diversity and our thing? I got those phone calls. It saddens me that you have your name and you fundraise as a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest. It's right here. I have other flyers. You have your name on it. Look it up. Saints and Sentinels, Mayor Justina Manalo.
You're out of order at this time.
Where's the money?
Please mute her.
Ron's always got the right thing. He believes in social justice. He didn't even know probably there's a conflict of interest. But Councilmember Buena Vatura, PBRC, and you recused yourself from the PIT contract, Pacific Islander contract. But you don't want to recuse yourself now when there's money involved.
Please comment on this at this moment, so there's clarity.
And why is there a three-year contract? I want to know that. I haven't finished with my question. Have you asked Mr. Sylvester if he has any questions? We're not, we're not through with the discussion yet. It is nothing personal. It's about monies and conflict of interest. Which the FPPC would probably find very interesting.
When the, when you call the question, that means it's.
And I still had the floor, but I was being respectful of another council member not to make a motion, so you let everybody have a voice, including yourself, because it is, it's not what it was about. It wasn't about, is that you could not, you put your name on that organization. As an elected official, we are not supposed to have our names and, and do any fundraising on the city property, especially with other organizations. And now they're caught in the middle, and they're, they're caught in the middle because you worked with them and you fundraised, it says, for the martial arts. You fundraised through Saints and Sentinels.
Ms. Zimmerman, um, I have a question. So when a motion is made, um, it's my understanding that when a motion is made, and then there's a second, then there's, the next step is, the convener usually says, is there any further discussion? So that's what we were doing. But I think a council member just kept going on and on without recognizing that there was going to be further discussion even after the motion was seconded. Is that the, the correct parliamentary procedure of how the discussion should flow, just to clarify?
For clarification.
Ms. Zimmerman, before you answer that question, I'd like to express a concern as well. I think the stated motion was premature in, uh, its action to discontinue further dialogue before a first and a second. And I believe Councilmember Di Giovanni started it, but they tried to silence any further discussion by making a motion where her original premise that she was leading to was the recusal of either one or two council members. So I wanted to make that comment.
Well, then let me follow up with that comment. Any council member can make a motion at any time. That doesn't mean, if you knew the parliamentary procedures, that the discussion is cut off. In fact, the discussion continues, because the very next step, after one makes a. after one makes a motion, is that, then you wait for someone to second. And then after the second, the very next word of the convener is to say, is there any further discussion? That's what you've done, Mr. Sylvester. When you have made motions, when you presided over council meetings, after a second is made, you always say, is there any further discussion? Because that's the parliamentary procedure. So that's where we are. Now, I voiced, voiced my approval of Mr. Bautista's motion because I wanted it to make clear that I support it. That's why I wanted to make the motion. It didn't in any way uh, was designed to stop the discussion, having known clearly what the parliamentary procedures are, which call for further discussion. So that's why uh, I'm asking Ms. Zimmerman, am I correct in saying that after the second, the motion is seconded, that they usually call for further discussion?
I have no problems. I do understand parliamentary rules and procedures. But again, I reiterate that making the motion was premature with a premise of this issue to be discussed is the possible recusal of a council member or council members. However, if that can be mitigated as a result of further discussion, then uh, I'd be willing to go along with that. So I'll, I'll wait for the City Attorney to opine on this.
Okay, um, there, there, there are several questions floating around. Um, and I, I, I would like to clarify some of the questions. I know Councilmember Ventura, you asked for procedural questions in regards to motions and the motions in order and seconds and discussion. Uh, and I, I would like to respond to that. Uh, Councilmember Sylvester, uh, did you have a question for me in regards to the dialogue that, that has engaged? Because I, I wanna be respectful to answer your question as well. So I just want for clarification.
Uh, thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. My question would be, uh, the one making the motion or motions, if it's later determined that there's a possible conflict of interest and they should have recused themselves, would you consider the motion valid in the first place?
Okay. Okay, um, I, I will respond first to Councilmember Ventura's procedural question. Um, when there's a motion on the floor and there's a second, um, we need to be mindful, the parliamentarian rules and Roberts Rules of Order are for order in the meeting and for the mayor to have um, control in conducting the meeting as the chair of the meeting. So when a motion is on the floor and there is a second, it is advisable that the mayor does engage in further discussion and dialogue before an actual vote. That is the procedure. Um, usually, a mayor can call the question if the debate and the dialogue has been going in a direction that may not um, precede order in the meeting. So yes, that is correct. I think that the procedure we like to follow is that all council members does, will have a voice. However, we do wanna have order in the meeting. And so when there's a motion and a second on the floor, it is advisable that the chair does request to have any dialogue or any future dialogue, but the mayor can call the question for the vote to happen. And that's the proper procedure for parliamentarian rules. Um, with respect to your question, Councilmember Sylvester, in terms of conflict of interest, the dialogue that has instilled is, is, is conflicts of interest are individual conflicts of, of each council member. And they're responsible for their own conflicts of interest. As the city attorney, I can give you some general advice, but I don't control the conflicts of interest for each council member. They control their own conflict of interest under the Fair Practices and Politicals Act. Um, if, for instance, there is a motion and it is later determined that there's a conflict of interest by an outside party, it can void the actual vote of the entire council. But for purposes of this meeting, if there is perceived to be no conflict of interest and the individual council members determine that there is no conflict of interest, despite if there are concerns from other council members, it is the ethical obligation of the individual council member to know if there's a conflict of interest or not, and can continue with the vote. So that the, the motion is not necessarily um, invalid unless there's a specific challenge to the vote itself. I don't, I hope that's helpful, and I'm, I'm trying to, to gauge sort of a response for the entire council.
Thank you, that's satisfactory to me, Madam City Attorney.
So currently, um, just through the chair, through the mayor, um, my understanding, there is a motion and a second on the floor, and it was proceeding to further discussion, is, is my understanding, um, for purposes of the meeting.
It was proceeding to further discussion, um, and uh, there, there was uh, at that timeframe, um, my colleagues were not listening to the presiding officer. And therefore, you also mentioned that at any time, the presiding officer can call the question. Therefore, I did. And it was very apparent that um, there was a, a lack of listening on um, and earlier. So therefore, um, I called the question earlier.
Annette Hippona here, did you mean for me to take any uh, vote?
Madam Mayor, did you want to have any further discussions before the vote, the actual vote? Or would you like to call the question on, on having the city clerk go ahead and proceed with the vote?
If there's more discussion, I'll allow for it, but there needs to be order, um, which was lacking earlier. And, and I, that's why I called the question. It was very apparent that there was a, a, a lack of decorum at that time. So at this time, uh, I see one hand raised. Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what I wanna say is, so in, in order for me to be heard, because you know, we talk about implicit bias, right? And it is clear, it is clear that this is a case of implicit bias. And I asked the, the, our members of our community to recognize this. And I asked the colleagues, and they know, they know, it's very interesting that the Pacific Island contract again, and the PRC contract, that Councilmember Buena Ventura wanted to recuse himself of the PRC contract vote because of his connection and having been on the board at that time. So, and it's really sad that Mr. Bautista got caught in this, but it's because of monies and using titles as an elected official, that we are not supposed to use our titles in any manner for raising funds for purposes of, in our city, our city grounds, for anything like that. And it surely says, again, under scholarships with the relationship of Mr. Bautista, that through recent fundraising efforts from our Saints and Sentinels launch exist in Daly City and San Francisco, we are able to cover the cost for self-defense classes for interested community members. At the bottom, it has, it has Mayor Justin Manalo and our PRC as well. And it really saddens me when I first saw it that you have your name on the Saints and Sentinels, and you publicly said that, um, Mayor Manalo, at a council meeting, when you announced the Saints and Sentinels. And you also said it in a newscast as well. We are elected officials. If we have an organization or a project, it is a conflict of interest for us to be working with groups in our community, at the city, for the city, on the city property, and raising funds for another group. Because here we all today, it's about monies. And what involves monies especially. And where are the funds that you raised? And Mr. Bautista generously said that he would give the classes for free. And he got his business license in Daly City last year. So it looks like his intent was that, I don't know what his relationship was with the PRC prior to that. And, and he was a for-profit. But if he gave his classes for free, and you raised the funds under Saints and Sentinels, where's the reporting of the money? And, and you're an elected official. Not only elected official, you're the mayor. Very disappointed. And if that is a conflict of interest, and Councilmember Buena Ventura, I'm asking politely, that you recuse yourself from the vote based on that. We are not to use our title, we are elected officials, and we are not supposed to be raising funds and working with groups in concert like that. The ideas were great, but you could have done it without that. You could have done it without that. But it wasn't done that way. And you wanted your name or a part of your project, you announced it. You put the vice mayor in it, he probably didn't even know it was a conflict of interest. If you look up FPPC or any of that, or, you know, I'm, I'm not speaking for Rod, I'm sorry, Rod. I, I wanted to make sure, be respectful. Because I'm not trying to drag the, the vice mayor into this, because he stands for social justice. And he stands for everybody having equity. Everybody in our community, not having a background of anything. And implicit bias is clearly here. And that is wrong, and you make any decisions as an elected official, you should recuse yourself no matter what, especially when monies were raised under your name. And where are they? And especially when you're on a board and you uh, recused yourself before Mr. Buena Ventura, and now you make a motion to support it. Would have been better off if you just supported it with your heart, because it was a good, good thing. But it has to be put out there for the public, because I've received so many calls. Do you understand that? We are elected officials by the people. You don't think that people know what's going on? They see it. So, I'm asking you both to recuse yourself from this matter. And uh, Mr. Bautista gave the thing, but is it conflict of interest? And that's what I have to say, and here's the proof right here, where you raised the money under Saints and Sentinels.org. And putting contracts in other people's names for an event. And by the way, so people know in the public, the city of Daly City did not sponsor that event on May 23rd, even though the city seal was used. That was not a city event. And there's more, more proof I can show you, if you go forward with the, with the vote. Thank you.
I, I think I, I, you know, in, in this regard, there's obviously some issues around demonizing uh, me as, as being someone that is trying to do something incorrect here, which is um, really unfortunate. Because all that was being done was really uh, a response to the attacks to the Asian American community. And what transpired was a grassroots effort of people uniting um, to be able to do something in a time, and maybe you, you know, uh, don't recall that time, an energy where so many people were distraught around the API, uh, Asian American attacks. And, and Project Sentinels was a response to that. And it was a collective effort to do so. Uh, and I mean, if there's any mobilization when something happens, people work together, right? We don't work in silos. And I didn't put my name on there like that. It was the organization as a whole putting my name, because we're collectively working together. Like collectively working together to find ways um, to be able to have um, you know, responses to the unfortunate incidents and the rise of um, anti-Asian sentiment that we all saw, that we all saw. And so this is really disheartening that a council member would demonize me in a way um, uh, to to, to infer such things. I, this is.
Mayor Manalo, that's the sentiment of what, of what was happening. Is that you used your name on the Saints and Sentinels. It's not even registered with the Secretary of State and SaintsAndSentinels.org, where, and the money was raised with your, under your name as an elected official. You could not, you should not be using your name as an elected official on an organization.
Utilizing that over and over again.
You can't do that.
Saying that over and over again, Councilmember.
That's the only thing, issue. It has nothing to do with the sentiment of it. It has nothing to do with any of that. It has nothing to do with, with uh, of course, the ra, the hate. But you, you, and your name.
What I'm saying is, we all work together, so.
You can do that without having the organization. You said it out loud at the council meeting sadly, that this was your, yours. Saints and Sentinels was yours. You said it in a, it's on YouTube.
A collective effort.
You're an elected official. We cannot use our titles as elected officials and put them in, on anything. We can't. We can't do that. But this, you're the mayor of this city. That's a conflict of interest. And you're working with these people, and now you can't, you're gonna vote on it. That's a conflict of interest. So that is my issue. But, but definitely not the sentiment of, of what was happening. Definitely could have been done in a different manner. Didn't have to put your name as elected official, didn't have to say it was your project. But you did. Don't know where the monies went for the fundraising, and um.
That is, so when you question the monies like that, you're not questioning only myself, but the, the people and the organization.
You, you're mayor not, Manalo. Because it's your project.
Of effort, so I'm sorry, it's a collective effort. No, it's a collective effort, and that's what.
Where, where is it registered?
Individual, the mindset you're seeing is individual.
Where's the Saints and Sentinels registered?
Okay.
Where's it registered?
So the organization.
The ability to raise the funds under Saints and Sentinels.
You, you keep pointing at me.
With your name.
Councilmember Di Giovanni, this is a collective effort. It was with the Filipino Mental Health Initiative.
You're not supposed to do that as an elected official. Not supposed to work together and use yourself to.
Care, I'm not supposed to take action, I'm not.
You can take action, but not with your name on an organization.
I did not put the name on the organization. I was sharing with the community, a collective effort that we were doing together with the organizations that stood up and wanted to do something in response to the anti-Asian hate that was rising. Okay, that, 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 that in effect, yes, it's in a press release. It's stated there, because we are responding to an issue that was occurring. Now, I am not gonna continue to rationalize myself. If, if you cannot understand that, that is what happened. I, I will not continue to do so. Um, because you know what? You know, that work was collectively with community and people because we wanted to be able to do something. So at this point, we are going to move on. Thank you for your comments. Uh, at this point, I'm going to uh, move on, and I see Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
I'd like to defer to Mr. Bautista or Councilmember Sylvester, because they had their hands before I had my hands up.
Sorry, didn't see that. Uh, at this point, let's have um, the Mr. Bautista, who's, who's here um, representing on this item.
Yes, hi, um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry for any of this that may have caused, but just to clarify, when Saints and Sentinels called me, they just asked if I can provide my services. And I did so freely. And if you look at their website, there are no businesses that are listed on there. It's just, everything's very general. So everyone that came to all those events, none of their stuff was advertised in any way, shape, or form, but we all just came and did our services. And I can't speak for everyone else, but I, I asked for any funds they were trying to give me to be put back towards this initiative. So that's all I can say about that. And in terms of PRC, I, anytime they ask, and they were doing any kind of event. So that's all I can say about that. And in terms of PBRC, I, anytime they ask and they were doing any kind of event, they needed something, I get it. No questions asked. Because I understood it's strictly with the community. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bautista. Uh, Councilmember Sylvester.
You very much. I have a few questions of, uh, the city attorney who drafted this agreement. Can you, uh, number one, advise me of how many other tenants are at this location?
So to my understanding, council member, um, WSPA, uh, has the bulk of the tenancy at this location. Um, PBRC has, uh, a, you, I believe a room or two rooms is there as well. We've had other tenants, um, or licensees at this locations, music arts, and, um, they're no longer there. This is the space that they're looking at and Leilani, correct me if, I don't know if our own, um, recreation department uses some of the rooms as well.
They no longer do. It's vacant.
Okay, okay. So it is vacant. So those are the only existing, um, licensees at the property, council member.
Uh, thank you. So that's WSPA and PBRC.
Right.
Okay. And is there a difference between both those organizations? And I basically, uh, want to be more specific, nonprofit versus for-profit?
Yeah, so WSPA, um, is a for-profit. They are not a nonprofit. And, um, PBRC is registered as a nonprofit.
Uh, thank you very much. And, um, have you made the calculations based upon square footage? Uh, I would assume WSPA as to what they're paying. And as for the, uh, upcoming requests by, um, Escobodan?
Yeah, so the comparables were based on the existing square footage, um, of this particular building space. And we use the square footage calculation based on the WSPA calculations.
Uh, yes. And so, uh, what are those numbers? I, I understand we came up with about twenty-seven hundred for Escobodan minus the four hundred for maintenance. So I'm looking at the figure of twenty-seven hundred. And what does twenty, how much square feet does twenty-seven hundred, I believe it's twenty, twenty-seven hundred and sixteen dollars represent?
So, um, I apologize, but we did not waive the, the maintenance fee for this license agreement. Um, the life, they do have the maintenance fee attached to. So the, the, the full amount is three thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars a month. Which my understanding is based about on a dollar sixty-five square footage, which is what WSPA is currently paying.
Okay, so, uh, uh, pardon me. So if I were to do the math, um, uh, at a dollar sixty-five per square foot for a for-profit organization, uh, what you're saying is that that's comparable to what WSPA is paying?
Yes.
Thank you. And, um, uh, do we have other, uh, units available? I heard, uh, it mentioned earlier that, uh, one of our, um, city agencies was a park and rec. Uh, is not using it. So do we have other spaces within that location available for other nonprofits or for-profits?
So my understanding that we rent out the space, there are particular rooms available. Um, I, I couldn't tell you for certain, but my belief, if, if, um, our city recreation department is no longer using the rooms, that there are more than likely some vacant rooms available.
Thank you. And, um, next question is to the, uh, city manager. Uh, Councilmember DJ Yovani made mention about an event at Gellit, Gellit Park uh, involving, uh, the martial arts group. And I did see a flyer and it had the Daly City seal on it. Uh, did we as the city, uh, support that event? This is to, uh, city manager.
Uh, we allowed the event to take place on, on our property, uh, at no charge. Uh, we, I don't know about the city seal. We, we, um, it was not a city event. So I don't know about the city seal. But we did allow for the, uh, event to take place at, at our park, free of charge.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I had another, uh, square footage comparison. Who are the other tenants? Okay, that's all the questions I have. I'd like to reserve my time to make a final statement after I hear from everyone else. Thank you.
Um.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanna, um, it really upsets me, um, that, you know, an organization that I know, Escobodan, that has deeply provided education of martial arts, Filipino culture. And to me, I think that, um, Councilmember DJ Yovani respectfully, like we use this word implicit bias. What you're doing right now is implicit bias. As a white woman, putting up things of Filipino organizations that stepped up to the plate to be responsible for a community and putting it out there and demonizing a narrative of Escobodan, Philippine Mental Health Initiative that came together to respond to the, to the, to the violence that was occurring during COVID nineteen. Now, understand that. It's, it looks really bad. In all honesty. You're, you're putting up pictures. You're, 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 we're, we're talking about providing a space for Escobodan that that does so much. My daughter goes to WSPA. When I drop them off and I see all the kids learning Filipino and non-Filipino, learning the, the skills of, of martial arts, learning discipline, learning about Filipino culture in the city of Daly City. It hurts. That's implicit bias. There's, there's a privilege. There's a privilege. And I'm, I'm saying this out of respect, Pam. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to hate on you or anything. But when you do that, it's, 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 it's a really bad look. And I'm not one that likes to call people out, but it just, it makes me upset. It makes me upset to see that, you know, we're, we're trying to do something, that we're trying to provide a space. Filipinos in this country have always tried, been fighting for spaces. And then people are getting demonized. Mayor Justin Manalo stepped to the plate. We got people together. Bam, let's, let's work together to educate people on, on racism. And if violence occurs, people can provide a sense of self-defense for them. And it's, it's really disappointing. I understand, um, maybe there were things that, you know, I'm, I'm learning now. You know, I'm learning now. Like maybe, you know, we do organizations or put together events. You know, this is a lesson learned. But in all, all honesty, honestly, the issue at hand is to provide a space and a service for the city of Daly City for an organization that has provided education, physical health, emotional health, support of the community. And I don't appreciate the, the smearing. And you can call what it is. It's, um, such as like a conflict of interest. But these are all nonprofit organizations that were responding to an issue. You know, and it just really, really, it hurts. It hurts. And I, and I think that, um, there's a second and a first on here. I know, um, Councilmember Sylvester has more to say, but I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Das Magwal. Um, I, I, I will say that the, the work, um, is, is there for the community and, um, uh, you know, we've called the question earlier and we provided opportunity for, uh, members of my colleagues to speak. Um, and, uh, be able to provide commentary. And at this point, we, we are, I think, uh, ready for a vote at this time.
I've asked for a final comment after hearing everyone speak. And I have my hand up, please.
Councilmember Sylvester, I will allow you for a comment and then. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. The statements I've heard this evening, uh, has, uh, definitely played, uh, uh, on my mind and the decision I'm about to make. Uh, the issue here is not necessarily pertaining to race. At least this is what I'm thinking. The issue here is pertaining to equity and fairness for both nonprofit and for-profit. And that is why I had asked specific questions. We learn from our experiences. And when there is a possibility of a conflict of interest, it can be so minute. But it should be without a reasonable doubt that there is a conflict of interest. I can say that I've seen the work of Escobodan. I've seen what they've done for the community. I've seen that they are always available. Basically, I think they would be available to any organization who asks. My concern was to ensure that our city is taken care of equitably. There's cost recovery. Uh, the rent is equitable amongst everyone being there. I can care less. And to say that, talking about a white woman, I completely disagree. We should be on this council and if we all were blindfolded, it doesn't matter who is talking and what your ethnicity is. I don't want to hear it and I'm tired of it. We've heard so many times about equity, BIPOC. And if you look at the initials of BIPOC, I'm on top of the food chain, but you don't see me playing that card. So let's get away and coming up with a possibility as, well, maybe that person is racist or whatever. We have to deal with the facts and what is good for the city. So, uh, again, I, I know what Escobodan has done for the community. And it appears to be equitable for me. They are not getting any special treatment. And that's what I am going to base my decision on. Thank you. And that's my comment.
Okay, if there's, uh, no other comments at this point, uh, we will call the question. I think, um, prior to us voting, I think it's very important for folks to understand even the location of where this, uh, area is. You know, the staff have, has worked very hard in this regard. Um, it's providing an, uh, opportunity for young people and old. Um, it's, uh, as mentioned, uh, vetted by the staff. And it's proposed, uh, here, um, on the table this evening. And so, uh, Madam City Clerk, um, roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Ms. DJ Yovani.
Uh, before I vote, I would like to address something and I have a right to do so. This has nothing to do. People know where I even go to church or where my synagogue is that is full of Filipinos. I'm invited to the Masons and I love my Filipino community. For you to say that, Vice Mayor, and to say the word, the color of my skin, you think that that didn't hurt? I never said anything about racism here. And you know it. It's about the, about the conflict of interest. And it wouldn't matter who it was, who they were behind it. It's about using our name as an elected official. It wouldn't matter. And it's not personal or any of that. So I'm gonna make it very clear. And yes, Mr. Bautista has done a lot in this community. And there's not anyone in this community other than the people I know who embrace me in the Filipino community. You will go and see who get, who got it. I go to all the Filipino events. A lot, many, 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 because they know my heart. I don't have to attest to who I am, how I'm born. I'm not gonna excuse myself. Whether I'm Jewish. Is that anti? I'm not gonna say that to you. Because it's not my heart, Rod, and you know it. And don't say me as a white, how I come, how God created me in this skin color. Latinos are the skin color. Referring to my skin color. That's unbelievably.
We're at a vote right now, um.
Yeah, you're at a vote. But I have a right to.
Of course, I'm just letting you know where to vote right now. And, uh, it is, uh.
And you guys have blocked me and I knew you would block me on this. And I knew it. So very disappointing. And if it turns around, that this comes back on the conflict of interest only. Not, nothing to do with Bautista. Nothing to do with the great work in us community. And you can smile all you want to, Vice Mayor. Because I know my heart. God knows my heart. And the Filipino community knows my heart. And how God created me should not be an issue or color my skin is. But Martin Luther King and my family and Jews. So with that, I'm gonna abstain on the vote only because of the conflict of interest that was not practiced here. Nothing to do with anything else. And don't flip it into something it's not. It's easy to do.
Councilmember DJ Yovani, we're on vote, voting now.
I did.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye. Madam City Clerk.
I believe I, I called everybody. Ms. Manalo, did you vote?
I said aye.
So I have four yeses and one abstention.
Okay, with four yeses. Thank you very much. With, uh, four yeses and one abstention, um, item number eleven, uh, passes. Now moving on to item number twelve. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number twelve. Adopting resolution, approve, approved, proposed revisions to the rules and regulations of the classified service.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is the request to adopt a resolution approving four proposed revisions to the rules and regulations of the classified service. After meeting and conferring with all bargaining groups, the city has agreed to recommend the following revisions to the rules and regulations of the classified service regarding one, job specification changes to include duties of the personnel board and duties of the city manager. Two, the reclassification process. Three, vacation accrual changes. And four, performance appraisal process. These changes will increase efficiency and streamline the process for rules that have historically delayed the turnaround time for making positive changes for the city. The city has met and conferred in good faith with all bargaining units. And as a result, have agreed to the proposed changes to the rules and regulations of the classified service. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the proposed revisions and is available to provide. and is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members.
Thank you, Ms. Akal on the information provided. The item was pulled. You have any questions, Councilmember D. Giovanni?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work and reaching out to all the bargaining groups and everyone. Make sure that was, everything was done equitable in your report, Natalie. I appreciate that and to all the staff, they did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, very equitable. Thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no other questions, is there a motion to approve item number 12, adopting the resolution for the approved proposed revisions to rules and regulations of the classified service?
I'll make that motion. And I request to make a comment and further discussion prior to the vote.
I have a first, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, I did not get item number 12 in my packet. And I would ask later on in the future to ensure that my electronic packet has all the items in the agenda. I hate to request a printed copy. But based upon the, the synopsis given by Ms. Akal, I wholeheartedly support the vote for this item.
Are there any other questions or comments? Being done, roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to item number 16. We are at item number 16. Use permit UPR dash one dash two, one dash one four eight five five and design review DR dash four dash 21 dash one four eight five six. McDonald's Restaurant Reconstruction at 505 Ceremony Boulevard. And we have Mr. Van Look Heisen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a use permit coming from the Planning Commission to the City Council for the reconstruction of an existing McDonald's restaurant at 505 Ceremony Boulevard. I think all of us are probably familiar with the location across from Ceremony Shopping Center. The existing McDonald's has been there for about 44 years now, quite some time since 1976. And it's time to tear that one down and rebuild it. So McDonald's Corporation has made an application to the city to do just that. The reconstructed McDonald's would include a drive-through restaurant as presently exists. The drive-through would actually contain a better vehicle queue to reduce the number of cars that are in Ceremony Boulevard. As those of you who may be familiar with the site and frequent the area know, sometimes the vehicle queue extends out into Ceremony Boulevard. And this is a double drive-through. And so would hopefully take up less space inside Ceremony Boulevard busy hours. The drive-through operate 24/7, just as the same, just as the restaurant today does. And dining room hours again would be the same just as the current operation between 5:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The 52 parking spaces that are proposed are 16 spaces less than the never required by the zoning ordinance. There's an, there's a explanation of this in the council staff report. It's essentially the use of the different restaurant standard, which is acceptable to the city staff. There was some study of this that was included. And we do think that the 52 parking spaces are sufficient, as is the 10-vehicle length queue that are proposed by the McDonald's. This just shows the location. I think we all know where it is, Ceremony Boulevard. Maybe of note is the adjacency to residential uses. So one of the things we'll talk about tonight is the new restaurant would employ emission control systems that are superior to the existing restaurant as well as volume control on the drive-through speakers, just as was the proposed and required of the In-N-Out on Geller. Which doesn't seem to be having an impact that we've heard of anyway. So conditions of approval actually are very similar between the In-N-Out and what's proposed tonight for conditions of approval. This is the existing restaurant. Here's the existing site plan. There's the proposed site plan. So this, the revised site plan would move the store further away from the street and provide a parking field in front. Little bit of a different design where the vehicle queue and the drive-through occur at the rear of the site. This shows the vehicle queue, meaning the cars that are stacked up in the drive-through also in this site plan. There remain to be basically three ways to get in and out of the site. Two on Ceremony Boulevard. And then there's an easement that goes through to Geller Boulevard, of course. Back on the back of the, I think it's a Flyers or Olympic gasoline station. The landscape plan. This is the proposed elevation, so the right elevation that we would see from Ceremony Boulevard. Fairly contemporary style. If you'd like to see what it's going to look like if approved, it's the, almost the same design as the store that was constructed down at Westboro. And I believe that's Geller, South San Francisco. Rear, rear elevation, these are the drive-through, you know, where you pick up your food. This would not be that visible. Of course, this is the opposite side of what's visible from Ceremony Boulevard. These are the fronts of the store, so the front elevation. Be that facing the service station and the rear elevation is that facing the adjacent hill to the west of the site. Use permit considerations are, as I mentioned, we, whenever reviewing a store like this, we take a look at who surrounds it. And in this case, we have some residential neighbors in the townhouses that exist at the south of the site. So we looked at air quality, noise, light and glare. And each of these items is mitigated in proposed kitchen mission systems. Volume control, as I mentioned, on the drive-through speakers as well as shielding to reduce light and glare to the adjacent neighbors. And then any of the illuminated signs on the site are required to be turned off at the conclusion of store operating hours, which in this case is kind of limited because again, it's, it is a 24-hour operation. But the signs are modest size as shown in the elevation. So we do not think that's a problem. The Planning Commission is recommending to the City Council that the council adopt the findings outlined in the staff report from the environmental assessment, which is that the project is exempt from CEQA and approve the use permit and the design review subject to the findings and conditions of approval that are identified in the council staff report. If there are any questions, of course, staff is here to answer those as well as the applicant and their team are also present tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Look Hausen on that presentation in regards to this. At this point, is there further presentation from the, the project sponsor itself? Or is it just a planning?
It's just the planning step.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this point, are there any questions for my colleagues? I see no hands raised at this time. There are no questions from my colleagues in regards to this.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve this project.
Second.
We have a first and a second. May we have roll call, please, Madame City Clerk.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This item unanimously passes. Now we are moving on to item number 17. Item number 17, the award of purchase contract for one VACCON combination sewer storm cleaner. We have Mr. Fornasi is here to present.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The item before you, as mentioned, is the appropriate appropriation of funds from the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund and award a purchase contract for one VACCON combination sewer storm cleaner. The recommended action is for City Council to appropriate $300,000 from the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund and award a purchase contract to Municipal Maintenance Equipment, MME, for one VACCON combination sewer storm cleaner in the amount of $578,448 in one set, including sales tax. The purchase request was sent to Municipal Maintenance Equipment, MME of Sacramento and Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for standard equipment purchases. A cost summary of the proposals is included in the staff report. Municipal Maintenance Equipment of Northern California provided the lowest price at $578,448 and one cent. MME and Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing are the only factory authorized VACCON distributors in Northern California. Staff has successfully worked with MME in the past on purchases and maintenance of equipment, establishing a strong record of performance. The new VACCON will add reliability to the important element of the day-to-day operation of the North County Sanitation District. The current VACCON that is due for replacement is 12 years old, has accumulated 60,000 miles of mostly short trip stop and go throughout the city and has experienced significant deterioration due to the salty climate in Daly City. This unit was scheduled to be replaced during the fiscal year 2021 budget cycle. However, due to COVID-19 pandemic and the efforts needed to finalize the equipment specifications for the new unit, staff was unable to complete the approval process prior to the end of the budget cycle. Therefore, staff is requesting City Council approve the appropriation of funds totaling $300,000 from the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund. This amount represents the unspent funds previously allocated for the VACCON purchase and return to the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund on July 1st, 2021. This item was also being presented to the North County Sanitation District Board tonight, where Sanitation District Board approved the transfer of $278,500 for the purchase. And combined with our $300,000 from the Fleet Replacement Fund, there'll be sufficient funding in this account to proceed with the purchase. The total cost of the VACCON is $578,448 and one cent. The North County Sanitation District Board approved, as I mentioned, the transfer of $278,500 from North San Mateo County Sanitation District. And the City Council authorized appropriation of $300,000 from the Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund. Sufficient funds will be available in, in the account 51315453 for the purchase. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fornasi, for your presentation on this. And I see one hand up from Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fornasi, this question is for you. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned North County Sanitation District. I'm going to be specific in my question. The allotment of 200, was it 75,000? Does that, any, is it, and does it come from enterprise funds? Or can enterprise funds be used in this acquisition?
I'll defer to, I'll defer to Mr. Piccolati, the Director of the Department of Waste Water and Water Resources.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. These, the enterprise funds that were, the 278,000 that was approved in the sanitation meeting tonight supplements the amount that was already paid to the vehicle fund. So those are enterprise funds, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolati. Every little bit helps. And thank you for the clarification. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have, it looks like someone in the attendees has their hand up. I'm just making sure that their hand up is for this particular item. And it's not for our general public comment. Hi, hello. Just making sure, I saw your hand was up. Is it for this particular item, idea, item number 17? We, we can't hear you. If it's for a general public comment, it will be closer to the agenda after item number 20. Okay, thank you. Actually, we have to vote on this item. First, are there any other questions for my colleagues in regards to this award of purchase contract for the sewer storm cleaner? Being none. Move to approve the item. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll make the preliminary motion if one has not been made.
There is already a motion on the floor. It was motioned by myself and seconded by Councilmember D. Giovanni. Well, roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. That passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item number 18. Award of Construction Contract for the Westlake Groundwater Storage and Recovery GSR Pump Station Modification Project. And we have Director Piccoletti.
Yeah, once again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, city manager and staff. This is, the item is to authorize staff to execute a contract with the Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction for the construction of the Westlake Groundwater Storage Recovery Pump Station Modifications. Assistant Director Joshua Cosgrove will present this item tonight. So Joshua is here to present to you.
Thank you, Director Piccolati. And thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. The, a little background, a brief background about the groundwater storage recovery project. It's a joint effort between the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, the City of Daly City and other pumping agencies to increase our storage of groundwater in the West Side Basin Aquifer. This specific project, the Westlake GSR Pump Station Modifications Project is one part. is one part of this overall GSR project. And it will allow Daly City to expand our groundwater treatment and pumping at Westlake Pump Station. San Francisco Public Utilities Commission is reimbursing us, is reimbursing Daly City for all of the costs associated with this construction contract. They approved the agreement and this project at their July 27, 2021, meeting. This project was publicly noticed for a competitive bid. And Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction Incorporated was the lowest and sole responsible bid. The bid was reviewed by Daly City staff, San Francisco PUC staff, and the design engineers, and all determined the bid to be responsive and responsible. The bid cost is $3,345,000. Staff included a 10% contingency amount for a total project construction cost of $3,680,000. As mentioned, San Francisco PUC is reimbursing us for all the costs, so there is no fiscal impact from this action. And so in summary, staff is recommending that the City Council award the bid and authorize staff to execute a contract with Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction Incorporated for the construction of the Westlake GSR Pump Station Modifications Project in an amount not to exceed $3,680,000. And staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the Mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Cosgrove, in regards to this item. And you, you mentioned that the recommendation for this, what, how, how far did the bid go? Was there, how far out did the bid go?
We-
No, it, it says Anderson, but was there any other companies or?
Yes, the bid, the bid was put out through our normal procedures to notify various contractors. We, staff, and also the design engineers reached out to multiple contractors in our area in Northern California to try to get some bids. Unfortunately, and, and the bid process took six months. So we spent a lot of time trying to get other, other bids from other contractors. But Anderson Pacific was the only one that did provide a bid.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just noticed that, yeah, there was only one recipient, or usually we have a comparison with other, others that have bidded for this particular job. And so I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, if, if I might add, Mayor, several bid packages were taken out by, by various contractors. So there was interest, but returning and actually putting in a bid was, was Anderson Pacific. So there was interest, but not enough to put in a bid.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, no hands raised at this time. I move to approve the item presented, item number eighteen.
Second.
I have a second, and may we have roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now we are moving on to, thank you. Now we are moving on to item number nineteen. The second reading ordinance for number 1450, amending section of Title 15 of the Daly City Municipal Code Regarding Building and Construction Permit Time Limitations. And we will hand it over to Attorney Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. This item came before the City Council as an introduction of ordinance. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1450 for adoption.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we just need a roll call vote for the adoption. So may we have a roll call vote, please?
A motion and a roll call vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Vitaventura.
Second.
I have a second for Vice Mayor Das Magual. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now we are moving on to item number twenty. The second reading for the ordinance number 1451, repealing and replacing Chapter 8.64 of the Daly City Municipal Code Regarding Regulating Use of Disposable Food Service Ware By Food Facilities. And we have Attorney Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This ordinance also came before the Council at the last regularly scheduled meeting for introduction of the ordinance. This is the second reading ordinance number 1450 for motion and adoption.
I moved to, moved to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1451, repealing and replacing Chapter 8.64 of the Daly City Municipal Code Regarding Regulating the Use of Disposable Food Service Ware and Food Facilities. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Vice Mayor Das Magual. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. This passes unanimously. And now we are at the part of our agenda in which we have public appearances and oral communication.
Now, according to the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the Mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance with the Council's Rules of Decorum will be muted. There are two hands raised. The last speaker is actually a call-in with no names. So when you are, I'm sorry, we have three speakers now. The last one will be Haba, and the first speaker is John Duggan.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Mr. Duggan, you have two minutes to speak, so please go ahead. We're at public comment right now.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I've just been brought to my attention about what is being planned for a park, you know, the park, Westmore Park, which has been a public park for fifty, I've, I've lived here since 1969. And it's slated to become offices. And, you know, this neighborhood doesn't have any open spaces. I mean, we have the, the schoolyards, but we can't really use those till after four or five, you know, during the, during the week. There's, we've already been shut out of Westmore ever since we voted for that, uh, that bond where they got to make everything plastic, you know, all the, the fields for the non-existent football team and the, maybe they have a baseball team at Westmore now. I think they do. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think that, and I understand that it's, um, Westmore's, uh, you know, or, or the, the school district's land, which was, you know, the city took care of, Westmore Park for forty-five to fifty, sixty years, probably. Then it was neglected. Our tennis courts never were redone, and now it's going to be taken away. And I mean, it's really going to affect this neighborhood. I mean, we don't have the track anymore to use. We don't have the baseball fields to use. We don't have the soccer fields to use. We don't have the tennis courts now to use. That's all, that's all for the private school now. And I'm really, um, and I, I, we were never, uh, there was never any notices. You know, there's no notices now saying, this is what's planned. Hey, community, what, you know, what do you think? I think it's, uh, I think that, uh, I mean, somebody, somebody said, go, go, I, I know I have, somebody said, go to Geller Park. Well, I'd have to drive about two miles to get to Geller Park. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we have someone that's calling in by phone. Please press star six to unmute, and please announce your name.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Oh, no, I have four minutes because I have to wait a half hour to get online. So you need to change that to four minutes for me. Are we understood? I'm the public. Confirm? Hello, are you there? Hello? Okay, so this was really about community leaders. Community leaders that I heard speak in April. It's not about you guys. This is about a man who died at the hands of the Daly City Police. He died because the Daly City Police do not have body cams. Because nobody on the council thought of putting body cams on the police department to protect the community. I heard kids, what I call kids, younger than probably my kids, get up there with tears flowing down their eyes. In a single dry, there was not a single tear shed by the council members. What I heard tonight was even more disturbing. I heard two City Council members accuse another council member of racism. This is, this is horrific. This is what newspapers write about. And I could say this because I married women, a woman of color in the community at San Francisco City Hall back in the nineties. And we have very mixed children. And what you did tonight, Mayor and Vice Mayor, was horrific. I want your resignations. I want everyone's resignation. This is absolutely, I mean, I'm beside myself. You received an email from one of my associates weeks ago from Bay Area Transparency, where Officer Perez from the SWAT team, star number twenty-seven, is a tyrant. Sergeant Hussein-
Your time has been reached.
Interrupted. No, 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 my time has not been reached. No, 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 that's not how it works. I waited a half hour online. You're wasting the public's time. You guys need to submit your resumes, your resignations as quickly as possible. I'm coming down there, the community is coming down there, and there's going to be lawsuits filed. Going to be a lawsuit for the death of a, of a gentleman. So I keep going. My time is not up. My time is not up. Your time is up. I want your resignation. My associates and I will bring down the cameras tomorrow. We will call you out. You need to submit your resignations tomorrow or by week's end. We're tired of this. I have children in the community, the, the other children that spoke, the other young adults that spoke at the meetings in April. And you guys have the audacity to sit up there stoic on your perch and act like everything's great. Well, you know what? Your kids, your families should see that April council meeting. Let them decide, are you doing your job or not? And I went down to, or one of my associates went down to City Hall after your city clerk hung up on one of my associates to receive recall information, to recall all of you. This is, this is an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment to the city, to the state, to the county. You're absolutely embarrassing. And you know, what, what blew me away tonight, Mayor and Vice Mayor, is what I witnessed about the racism. And I agree with Mr. Sylvester on that. Normally, I don't agree with a lot of you, but that was, that was so bad. That was so bad. And I know because I came here to speak a man, to speak about an African-American man that died. I know damn well I'm not a racist. And I knew damn well because I married a woman, a Filipino woman. I know damn well that I'm not a racist, but that was horrific. I don't, I can't even look at you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. That's how bad it is. I'm, I'm, I'm limited. I'm absolutely limited. And you, I will be down there tomorrow. Do you want to, do you want to, do you want to confirm that you will be, you will be putting through your-
Next, we have Hiba.
Hi, good nee, hi, good, oh my God. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Hiba. I actually attended the last few council meetings, and I actually have two items I'd like to talk about. So if you guys could cut me off like when I'm done, because I waited like three hours to talk, and no one else is here to make a public comment. So the first comment is about Roger Allen. I just was wondering, because I actually want to hear your responses. Like, I'm not here to target you guys. I'm not here to fight with you guys. I'm here trying to work with you guys. And you guys know, Four Daly City is a community organization that basically emerged because the lack of accountability, the lack of response from you guys and the police department. So my question was in regards to Roger Allen. Were there any updates? Is there going to be a third-party investigator, investigator, like basically what's going on? And why is the cop who killed him still, why does he have his job? Like, why is he still policing our communities? Because I've lived here literally since I was born, and I do not feel safe here. And you guys were talking about diversity earlier. And I thought it was really funny because you guys are so selective about which communities you're willing to fight for and which you're willing to be outraged for and which you're willing to stand up for. My second comment is about the community garden. I also want to work with you guys on this. Like, is there an alternative solution other than bulldozing that area that we can implement? Like, um, I'm basically working with people from the Four Daly City organization, trying to find alternatives, trying to reach out to like youth, our community teachers. And actually, Mayor Manalo visited the garden recently. She saw how many people showed up and were there, how many people plant stuff in the garden, how many little kids were playing around. And you guys are really going to bulldoze it and not provide alternative solutions. So I'm just wondering what can be done about these two subjects, and that is all. Thank you.
Mayor, we have one additional hand that was raised. Okay, okay, raci-tory.
Okay, okay, Race Torey. Mr. Torey?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor and the Honorable Members of the Council. Well, I just heard about this so-called PBRC. I, I don't understand this Ms. Pam Giovanni and Sylvester Stallone. I don't understand why there is some piece of this PBRC. You have no regards or even the so-called grateful before we helped you before. Now, because you want to target the mayor, Justin Manalo, to me, it's, it's more of the luxury of your character. You are trying to stripify yourself there because we are there to help. We, we always approach the mayor every time we have a project, just like Glenn. You should not be too, I would say, I'll let's say bad words, but, but, because when you were the mayor, you were even trafficking the giving of foods community. Now you're asking this, what is good for the gun, there must be good for the goose. I'm really, I don't know what to say. If I might, really, I'm, I'm shaking, really. As the pundits would say it, let those people who are clean, they can speak. But you're, you're, you're not that in both of you, both of you are dirty. And next year election, Pam, I will see to it that you are not going back to the council. Promise that. If I have to run, just to beat you, I'll, I'll run. Believe me. Because I'm really, I don't know. Because you're stupefying the rec, the council, even the economic growth, you're stunting it. I don't know why. I, you want to embarrass the mayor, Vice Mayor, and ready? Is that, it's a city that is losing. Believe me, believe me, it's the loose city that is losing. The great where we tell what we should be. I'm sorry to say this, but Pam, just, you have a lot of dirty leaders, and I, we will have to have this on, on next, next year election. Believe me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
No more, there is no more other, okay, thank you, Leilani, for facilitating that. So there's no more public comment on here. At this, at public comment, we can't really address directly any of the public comments, but we have definitely written down the concerns of folks that have stated some questions and will directly, but on the dais, we cannot address it in public comment. And therefore, thank you for being able to express your concerns and if staff can take note on the public comments that were just arisen, we, I know we cannot take action on it, but just to be able to ensure we have, have those. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other public comment at this time, we are now at our appointments of our boards and commissions. Oh, Councilmember Benaventura?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Regio Panisa to a vacant, my vacant recreation commission.
Second that? Okay. So I believe this is a voice vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes.
I spoke with Dory Panisa, she knows that because she's my commissioner, that I may have to recuse my vote, but she knows I support her side.
Okay, so we need to clarify. Will you?
I'm not voting no. I support Regal.
I think we should have a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Yes, I spoke with Commissioner Panisa, who's a, so she knew that because she's my commissioner, because they're related, and she knew that, so. But I'm not voting no.
Mr. Sylvester?
But I support Regal.
Pardon me, pardon me. Mr. Sylvester?
I'm Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. So that was a unanimous vote, correct?
No, one was abstained.
No, yeah, well, I recuse my vote, yeah, she knows.
Well, we need, I need that to be because you said yes, and then yes is not an abstention.
Then I support him, yeah, abstain. I guess that's when you have to recuse. That's not even a vote, right, when you recuse? Because she's my commissioner and they're related.
For the record, I'll put down abstained. Is that correct?
Or recuse. Is a recuse no abstention? Through the city attorney?
It has the same effect.
Same effect, but you can still put recuse. I prefer recuse.
Okay.
Because I had a conversation with, with Ms. Panisa.
So recusal is no vote?
Yeah. But not abstain. Thank you.
Okay, so four yeses and recusal, meaning there's no vote on the table for, from Councilmember D Giovanni.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other appointments to boards and commissions at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Rick Crump to the Planning Commission. His term expired in July, into July.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. So this probably is a roll call vote.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
No.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. So that is four ayes and one no. Thank you very much. Moving on to council committee, city council and staff. So city council committee, please. Are there any city council, council committee meetings? I think we were in recess, so there's probably none, and that record, in regard, now city council.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, council members.
Okay, thank you. At the city council report, I would just like to report that as recent as nine eleven for this year, as we know because of COVID, but I'd like to make sure that the firefighters moving forward are given, like, like next year, being able to come through with what they conceive as a better idea, to make sure it's annual like it was two years ago, where it was inclusive and it was a very formal program, and they're gonna be transcending their thoughts and, and because it was such a tragic day, very hard on everyone, that next year, we can make it more meaningful for the public and for the community as well. And then I'd like to also respectfully inform my colleagues that during the last, probably, I don't know, several weeks or what have you, just by chance, by seeing people coming to, trying to use our red phones out front, that our police department is aware of it, that you cannot pick up the front lot red phone, and if a person speaks into it, they cannot hear it. So, but the city manager and our chief, acting chief, our gammas are on it, and thankfully, and see what they can do to make sure that that gets fixed, and that would be great if we could do that. Thank you.
Any other city council at this time? I do want to thank staff for putting together ribbon cutting in the east side of Daly City. You know, being able to provide even, you know, a ceremony that was done for that part of the area. A lot of young people utilize those basketball courts, young and old. So I want to say thank you, Leilani, for putting that together to be able to highlight all of the renovations that have been happening within the different parks of our city, understanding that it, it is so important to have these places and spaces to recreate play in our communities. And some don't know, I know during the surveying, I've spoken to community members on the ground, didn't realize how many actually top lots we have, parks all around the city of Daly City, that we should be very proud of, that we have access to those parks within our communities. Thank you. Now we are moving on to staff, staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are at the end of our meeting. I want to thank everyone that has been with us throughout the evening. We will now be adjourning tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following. And at this point, I will now ask Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, I'm back. I'd like to defer because I gotta go get my charger. My battery's going low and I may lose power. So I'll, I'll come back. Okay, okay, you got it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The following, I'd like to adjourn in honor of the following. Most of these folks that you're about to hear, I've personally, I've personally worked with. So the first one is a Matt Krimsky. He's a retired police inspector, sergeant inspector, very well-known. The second one is a Captain Michael Brush. He used to be my commanding officer when I was working. The third person I like to give a little history of, and his name is Carl Payne. After Payne graduated high school, he served for six years in the US Marine Corps as a private first class. He was stationed in Japan for two years as a military police officer. He was discharged from the Marines at the naval base in Treasure Island. And he said, the roaring sixties was just getting started, so he decided to stick around for a while. And prior to his passing, he says, I'm still here. You know, San Francisco will grab you and you won't want to go. This is a fantastic town. After working a couple of jobs as a house mover at a lock company, he put in an application to the US Postal Service and Muni at the same time. The day he was supposed to go to the post office to get sworn in, Muni called him and said, hey, do you want to come to work? You can start tomorrow. And he recalled, Muni was paying more than the post office, so he took the Muni job. His career with Muni lasted twenty-nine years, and all of them were on the cable cars. And that's where I met him, on the cable cars. The cable cars would roll past Union Square, he heard the bell ringing competition, and he decided he would enter. The first six or seven times, he entered the contest and didn't even make the finals. Then he decided to get serious about it. Later on, he garnered ten titles as the champion cable car bell ringer as a source of pride it was for him. The record still stands today. He said, the boy who has the championship now only has won it eight times. His only musical experience was a drummer in high school, and he says, what drummers do with two hands, he can do with one. He traveled the world, he performed on the sidelines, and he performed for the San Francisco Forty-Niners three times when they won the Super Bowl. The judges and the cops deemed him as an expert because he would point out pickpockets on the cable cars. And police officer told him, you might as well get paid for catching pickpockets. He took the police test and he passed. Just when he was about to enter the police academy, he received a call from the department. They said, Mr. Payne, we looked over your application and we see that you just turned thirty-six, which makes you automatically disqualified. After some lawsuits and never giving up, he finally entered the police academy at fifty years old. He loves dealing with people, and what he learned from his experience is that most people just want someone to listen to them, he said. He started experiencing bad health ten years ago. He spent nearly twenty-five years on patrol, and he was close to seventy-five years old when he retired. He came down with chronic lymphoma. He said he had it under control, and it developed to a different type of cancer, which he was fighting now. After he left the police department, he became a park ranger in Golden Gate Park. And he says he hasn't been to work for over a year because of this cancer. He lost forty pounds, and he says, I'm not giving up. I have an old saying, we all have a number on our backs. God is the only one who can see it. And that's my request for adjournment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And now we have Councilmember D Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to begin by adjouring in memory of Kalista Rothie. Kalista Rothie was a fabulous teacher at Benjamin Franklin. She left a impactful, the services were full, full of love for her. She was considered the probably the funniest, her brother said, at the services, the funniest sister that he had, and that she always gave from her heart, and it was clear by everyone that was there, all her colleagues at Ben Franklin. And sadly, she was very young when she passed, but very loved, and left a lasting impact to all the children and all in our, not just Filipino community, but with all the students. Secondly, I'd like to close in the adjourning in memory of Nicholas Salazar. Sadly, he was only 21 years old, he was the son of council member in San Bruno's, Salazar's son, who he lost unexpectedly. And we attended the services along with the council member Sylvester was there. Heartbreaking when you lose a child at that young age. And forever in his mind, and they read a poem, actually, that this young man was so creative. And so they read his poem at his services and it was pretty moving. Thirdly, is Richard Trumpka. Most people know him because he was the head of the AFL-CIO for many years. He also left us at a very young age, but he was tremendous impact in the union community. With our Justo Sematiko Labor Council and throughout the nations, he stood for workers' rights. He headed up everything that you can think of, anytime there was a wrong done, he stood up for them. He also left a lasting impact. And then I'd like to also close in the memory of our 13 Marines that we lost recently in Afghanistan, and to the innocent people and innocent lives lost the same time to Afghanistan. And who, those who are fleeing for their lives for this country, just like relatives that we had for the Holocaust. Where I had a grandfather that was in the Holocaust. When you flee for your life from another country, and you know that this is the only place that will accept you for who you are, unbiased and not. And then also, I'd like to close also in the adjourning in memory of, we just recently had the 20th anniversary, some of us lost people at ladder 10 as firefighters that were dear friends. And there were 3,000, as we know, lost, 343 firefighters. There were law enforcement that passed away along with first responders. And we will never forget nine eleven, and it says, "If it happened the same day," that's how painful the other day was. That's why moving forward next year would be a different story for our dear beloved firefighters in leading the way and what they want for that day. But thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Now we have a council member Benaventura.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a Daly City resident, a longtime Daly City resident, Elsa Ramos. Elsa was really one of the leaders in Southern Hills, and I remember when I first got involved in in elected office, she was one of the first people, her and her husband, her late husband also, Max Ramos, were very welcoming. And they were very strong advocates for their community in Southern Hills. They had a really, a strong community, a strong following. I would get invited to some of the dinners that they would have annually. And it was really a good group of people, to which Elsa made a tremendous difference. And I remember a lot of her stories about how she struggled to even purchase a home in Southern Hills. And some of the issues she faced way back then, including discrimination. So I would like just to adjourn in memory of her, she just recently passed away. Longtime friend, longtime community leader, thank you.
Thank you, council member Benaventura. And I will adjourn in memory for a legendary football player of Daly City, Tyrese Knox. Tyrese Knox was a former Jefferson High School football and basketball star. He recently passed away at the age of 56. Mr. Knox graduated from Jefferson in 1984, ending his high school career, scoring a 78 career touchdown and 5,217 rushing yards. His record was not broken for another 13 years. Mr. Knox went on to play an amazing four seasons at the University of Nebraska. And in 1995, he was inducted in the Peninsula Hall of Fame. I want to celebrate his achievements in Daly City and beyond, and offer my deepest condolences to the family of Mr. Knox. And now I will pass on the floor to Vice Mayor Dos Magual.
Thank you, Mayor, it's been a heavy, heavy week, losing family members and friends. I'll start with my grandma, my Lola, this for you, Lola Crisanta Leano Lorente Magual. She passed away in early morning of September 10, 2021, two days after her 96th birthday. Born on September 8, 1925, in Pagsanaan Badokelokos Norte, where she became a war veteran after Japan, Japan's occupation of her village in 1941. And later married my grandpa Enrique Ragneses Magual in 1949, where they were married for 47 years. With their, with their marriage, she became the mother of six to Bernardo Magual, Ernesto Magual, Leo Magual, Amanti Magual, Noberto Magual, and Amor Magual. And later went on to have five more children with Norma, Delia, Ronaldo, Myrna, and Ferdinand. Crisanta was one of the first in the family to immigrate from the Philippines, arriving in Maui, Hawaii in 1984. It is there that she first planted the roots of her legacy, giving opportunity for more family members to arrive and fulfill their American dream. She worked multiple jobs to support her family, whom she loved dearly, always putting on emphasis on having a close connection to them and our culture despite the distance from her homeland. She was, she was a devoted member of the Iglesia de Cristo Church, where she found a sense of community and service. She lived her remaining years in Las Vegas, Las Vegas, Nevada, and in Badokelokos Norte, Philippines. My Lola Crisanta is preceded in death by her husband Enrique and her son Ronaldo Magual. She is survived by her loving children and their families, Norma Corpus and family, Myrna Magual and family, Delia Espanto and family, Ferdinand Magual and family, and many great grandchildren and great grandchildren. You'll be Miss Lola, I love you. And your legacy will not be forgotten. And the second one is one of my best friends. Dr. Gwen Angelica Augustin Nadora. Transitioned on Mondays, September 6, 2021. Gwen was funny, fierce, and a fighter for everything she believed in. Especially when it came to her family, friends, and community. She served as the Director of Special Education and Student Support Services at Caliber Schools, and as the Aspire Educational Psychologist in Counseling and Psychological Services at SS State. After Gwen Augustin Nadora worked in public education for two decades, beginning with her time with Penai-Penai Education Partnerships as a founding teacher and coordinator in 2001. Gwen would proclaim herself as the triple crown gator because she graduated three times from SS State. She graduated with a double major in psychology and child adolescent development, a master in science and psychology with PPS credentials in school psychology and school counseling, and graduated as one of the first two Penais with an educational doctorate in educational leadership. Like many gators, she was an activist and advocate for underrepresented and marginalized communities. Gwen worked as the school psychologist in special education who focused on mental health programs and services, led student-centered teams, and provided consultation. She worked as administrator who led special education programs ranging from elementary to high school students. Gwen also taught psychology courses at Diablo Valley College and behavioral intervention and management courses for Teacher for America. Gwen's research explored the overrepresentation of black and brown children in special education and the lack of community responsive services. Gwen not only studied this, but she lived it. She was deeply passionate about student equity and believed that all children can achieve, given the support and services they needed. She promoted civic responsibility, high expectations, and developing a community of learners. Along with being such an amazing leader and supporter in our communities, Gwen was a loving and dedicated family member and friend. She is survived by her mother and father, and her sister Grace, and her husband Al, her sister Glenda, and her brother Gerald, and his wife Janet, and her brother Jaren. Her legacy will continue to live through her nieces and nephews, Kalia, Andrew, Kyrius, Anthony, Camia, Khalil, and her grandniece and grandnephew Kamaya and Isaiah. And she is also the godmother to my son Rason. Gwen is survived by her husband Eric Imagine One Nadora, whose work showcased by the Daly City Arts and Culture Commission in November 2017 through his multimedia art exhibit called Halftime. Gwen will be sadly missed by her family, her husband and her friends, her colleagues, and the pep family. In her memory, please donate to the Dr. Gwen Augustin Nadora Memorial Scholarship at ppsf.org. Gwen, I love you and watch down on us. And I adjourn in memory of your friendship and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dos Magual. Condolences to you and your family. And in honor of all of those this evening, may we all have a moment of silence. Thank you. Good night.